First meeting as Chair. So.
Recording in progress.
Is everyone here that needs to be here? I see Steve and Scott.
Everyone's here.
Excellent, thank you. Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners, Wasco County, January 5th, 2022. Happy New Year to everybody. Calling this meeting to order is my, as I mentioned, my first meeting as Chair, so bear with me. I've got some great colleagues and a great team to keep me on track today, so we'll see how it goes. All right, so first up, I'd like to ask any staff or my colleagues if there's any changes to the agenda?
Chair Schwartz, we need to remove the deed transfer to Duffer. We have another document that needs to be created and reviewed that goes along with that. So we're going to move that to the January 19th session.
Okay, great. Anything else for removal or additions for my colleagues?
I'm not sure it's an addition, but maybe the discussion about the tent location. That's, we have seen some information going around, and maybe Dr. McDonald or Shelley might address that, but that might be something we want to discuss as well.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. I was thinking we would make that an agenda item, and if we can fit it in between, you know, right after the COVID update, that would be great if we run out of some time, because we do have a hard stop with the ordinance hearing. If we have to stop, maybe Dr. McDonald and Shelley can hang in there for a few minutes, and then we can continue that discussion. How's that sound? Okay, great. All right, so why don't we go ahead and move on to our COVID update with Dr. McDonald and Shelley? Thank you for joining us today.
All right, everyone. Thank you for having me. This is Dr. Marion McDonald. I'm the Health Officer for North Central Public Health District. Sorry, Kathy. Kathy's getting our slides all together. So I'll just start off with, Kathy, I'm not sure if you can tell, we're seeing, we're not able to see, we're seeing the whole slideshow. Not just the slide.
Let me see if I can fix that. Are you seeing it now?
Sorry, that's perfect, Kathy. Thank you so much. All right, everyone. So this is our COVID-19 update. I'm gonna be very brief. As most people are aware, COVID-19 cases in the USA have increased dramatically. On the left-hand side of the screen is way back in 2020. Can't believe this graph is now encompassing two years. The red line is the number of daily cases reported in the United States. Obviously, you can see that the red line has gone up dramatically. The United States has had the highest number of cases at any time during the pandemic in the past couple of days. Next slide. Oregon is no different. This just, slide just looks a little bit different. This is the same thing, starting back in 2020. Daily reported COVID cases, sorry, it's a little fuzzy on the right-hand side, but again, there have been some days, and you know, this, this some of the big daily numbers have more to do with reporting than actual cases that day. So some days are going to be a lot higher than others just due to the holidays and weekends, but regardless, there's been a large increase in cases in Oregon, and next slide, please. Then in Wasco County, our cases have increased as well. This is just weekly cases. So back in December 15th, December 12th, December 19th, cases were going down. The week starting December 26th, they went up. The week starting January 2nd, so just this past week, so this is just three days worth of cases that we are experiencing. Next slide, please. However, as we've talked about a lot, really what we're concerned about is cases that are causing severe problems. Now, people can certainly have severe problems and not be hospitalized, but really using the number of hospitalizations kind of gives us a better sense of really, you know, what this disease is doing in our community. So again, this is our in Oregon, COVID-19 hospitalizations, and unfortunately, on the right-hand side, you can see that graph going up again, so. As we all know, cases go up, and then a week or two later, hospitalizations go up. Next slide, and sorry, this is not super graphic, but I wanted you to know, so Region 6, that's Hood River and Wasco Counties. This is our hospital capacity, so essentially Mid-Clemens Medical Center in Providence, Hood River. Currently, and this is all the beds, this is not just COVID cases, but currently nine out of 10 intensive care unit beds are occupied in Region 6, and 44 out of 49 non-intensive care unit beds are occupied. So again, meaning that our hospitals are essentially at capacity. All right, and then just an update, I'm gonna go, actually, I'm gonna start from the bottom up. Because I want to lastly talk about isolation and quarantine. So just so you know, the bottom-up NCPHD Thursday clinic site has changed. Unfortunately, our readiness center, I think there was a plumbing issue and a broken pipe. So instead of our regular clinic held at the readiness center this Thursday, it's going to be at Sunshine Mill. I don't know if wine is going to be served. We can only hope. But everyone who has an appointment is being notified, and then we're also notifying all of our partners, so that will be so grateful to the people at Sunshine Mill for allowing us to utilize their space. So that's for this Thursday. Next, some news you may have heard, Pfizer has now included in the emergency use authorization boosters now for ages 12 to 15. So this is a change. This just came out a couple of days ago. Again, those boosters would only be started when a person is six months out from their second dose, but this is a big thing. The reason why it's a big thing, I mean, talk about this, is we've heard so much about people being up to date on their, or excuse me, about being fully vaccinated. Kind of the phrase that's replacing it is now, are people up to date on their vaccinations? So essentially, for someone to be considered up to date on their vaccinations, they would either be within six months of their primary series, if they got Pfizer or Moderna, within two months of getting a single Johnson &amp; Johnson, or if they have received a booster. Anyone who doesn't fall into that category certainly gets protection from, some protection from those vaccines, but is not considered up to date. And then lastly, I'm just gonna talk about from the CDC, and then also in Oregon, the Oregon Health Authority have changed some of the recommendations and guidelines around length of isolation and length of quarantine. Isolation for a long time has just been, someone tests positive, either from the day they test positive for their onset of symptoms. Isolation has been recommended to be for 10 days. Now, this, there is the potential for having a shortened isolation for only five days if either a person is asymptomatic, or if their symptoms by the time day six rolls around are definitely improving, and then that they also have not had a fever in 24 hours, and that person will continue to wear an effective mask for the remainder of the 10-day isolation period. So there's a little bit of change in isolation. I will tell people currently for the way that we are working with the schools, just for this week, most of the schools haven't even, many of our, or in Wasco County, most of our schools have not been in session in person, so it's not such an issue, but currently we're sort of for students and staff following the older guidelines until the OHA and ODE kind of gets up to date. Thing that I'll say about quarantine, quarantine times have shortened also. And essentially, if a person has been exposed and they are up to date on their vaccines, then they would not need to quarantine. However, if they are not up to date, or if they've never been vaccinated, then quarantine is still recommended at least for five days, and then an additional five days with mask maring. The reason that this particularly wanted to end on isolation and quarantine is that we've had a tremendous challenge in our region. There's been a large outbreak among, of COVID among our unsheltered homeless population. Now, as you know, of course, with freezing temperatures, this is a tremendous challenge this time of year anyway for our unsheltered homeless people. In the DOWs, the warming shelter that is held down at St. Vincent serves as a place where people can spend the night indoors. However, if those folks have tested positive for COVID, obviously, they need another place to go. Some of those people, we do have availability sometimes at some of our local hotels, which is incredibly gracious. Unfortunately, that's not always the case, and some of these people are unable to comply with all the rules in a local hotel, and that brings us to our, our most pressing issue of people who live in our region, have COVID, need shelter, but are not able to go to the warming shelter, which they sometimes utilize, and are not able to utilize a hotel. So I'm gonna ask Shelley Campbell, our director, to sort of take it away with the struggles and the challenges that we've had trying to take care of these incredibly vulnerable people in our region.
Thank you so much, Dr. McDonald, for that overview. So my name's Shelley Campbell. I'm the Director at North Central Public Health District. Thanks for having us here today. We've had much discussion around the placement of our unsheltered homeless people that can't comply to being in a hotel. This really did break out over the holiday season, and with help of emergency management and ODHS with the state, we were able to get a tent, an eight-person tent that was brought into the community to be able to house the population that needed housed. The tent was set up at the Discovery Center. It came with a generator that had heat and lights, eight cots, sleeping bags, blankets, those type of things. We worked with our community partners to provide some food services around that. The challenges that we're having are really around health and safety for not only the individuals that are housed in the tent, but for the staff and volunteers that are providing those services. As we discussed or talked a little bit about was, people who are having challenges complying with isolation or quarantine, many times that has, comes around on mental health issues, and our staff and volunteers, one, are not trained to work with people who have strong mental health concerns, and to be able to send our staff out to provide those services, along with the wraparound services, which include the food and medical concerns and things like that, which our staff and volunteers are doing, but also having the tent out at that area. Again, we have a generator, but the generator is gas-operated at this time, and it has to be filled every seven to eight hours, which meant our staff and emergency staff, Sheridan, who has been wonderful help with that, is going out in the middle of the night to fill up the generator. We do know that at this moment, we're working with electrician to get some electricity out there, but the situation is not really helpful or conducive to the needs that we have. We feel we really need for the health and safety of not only the individuals that are being served, but for the staff and volunteers, that that tent really needs to be moved into an area closer into the county limits or the city, so that we have access, better access to support the individuals and be able to serve them better, as well as keep our staff and our volunteers and the community safer. Again, this, we had a long discussion yesterday with the city and some city community volunteers and agencies, such as the Shelter, and the mayor around this being not specifically a public health issue only, but really a community issue. And we really are asking for our county leaders and our city leaders to support us in getting this tent into an area where our staff and the clients can be served in a safer manner. I'll leave it there for now, and if we have questions, we're happy to answer those, and hopefully work together to find a solution that fits all of us.
All right, thank you very much. Why don't we just, first of all, go back to, I'd like to ask Steve or Scott if they have any questions around Dr. McDonald's presentation, first and foremost. We'll start there. How's that?
I don't have any today.
No?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. McDonald. Good report, and my hat's off to you, because everything is changing, 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 so good job with keeping us up to date.
Thank you, both of you. I do have a couple of questions. Dr. McDonald, could you please elaborate a little bit? You, you mentioned an effective mask. Could you elaborate a little bit on exactly what that is these days?
Sure. Although cloth masks are useful, a more effective mask would either be a surgical-grade mask or what is called a KN95, or even an N95 mask, so those are the ones that filter out a lot more particles, so sort of the you can reduce the transmission of viral particles from a person if they do have COVID, if they're wearing one of those masks, and also reduce a person's chance of contracting COVID. So although cloth masks are still accepted and considered masks for, certainly to prevent transmission, to prevent infection, either surgical-grade mask, which many, those are available, you know, Fred Meyer sells them. It's, it's, they're not really challenging happily at this point to get ahold of, and they certainly are superior. KN95 masks are also available. You can certainly order them online, and N95 masks are available as well. Those, to be completely effective generally need to be tested in a certain way to make sure that it fits with your face, and certainly those who work in the medical community and first responders have those types of masks. But even if you have a N95 mask, even if it's not been able to be fit-tested, that would still be, provide better protection than a cloth mask.
Thank you. And, and then I would just have another comment around, as we mentioned a few weeks ago, there's a lot more people doing home tests, so and probably not reporting their results to the Health Department, so you know, we don't really have probably a really effect accurate baseline, or, and then, so I think it's really important for folks in the audience to, you know, if you do test positive at home, with all the changing guidelines, and you know, it's hard to keep track of that, and Dr. McDonald is our expert, and if you do test positive, wouldn't it be great if you called the Health District to get those specific instructions and use them as your, as your resource, correct?
Yes, please. Thank you. Certainly, we really appreciate it when people give us a call, oh, here at the Health Department. Certainly, you could call your primary care provider too, and they will also give you accurate information. But yeah, we like to be able to keep track of things, and also to let people know what services are available if they do need services, because they need to be in isolation or quarantine. So we really encourage people, I will say, just because the, the number of cases that has increased so much are, the work that we do in terms of quote-unquote "case investigation" has changed dramatically, and we really are focusing on just providing people with the best information that we can, more giving out information to the people that we reach, and then also providing them with services or access to services.
Excellent, thank you. And now I'd like it up, to open it up to anybody in the audience that would like to take this opportunity to ask questions of our health experts today. Would anyone like to raise their hand or just jump in here? This is your chance. Okay, going, going, gone. All right.
I see Mayor Mays has his hand raised.
Oh, where is he? Oh, there he is. Oh, look at that. All right. Hello, Mayor Mays. Thank you for joining us today. Did you have a question for Dr. McDonald or Shelley?
Yeah, we had quite a lengthy discussion about this yesterday, as some people know, and I don't want this question to be, be considered any sort of criticism at all, because you know, this incident at the Discovery Center happened over the holidays and with very bad weather, and I think that the people that were going out there every eight hours to fill up the generator in this kind of weather on the outs, you know, three miles from town, were, to say they were above and beyond the call of duty, I think is an understatement, but I'd like to ask, what, what went into the decision to place the tent at the Discovery Center in the first place? And who provided the tent? Which, which agency was it? Was it the military or the state? And if so, if it was the state, what, what agency at the state provided the tent?
Micah, will you take this one away, please, and introduce yourself? Thank you so much for being here.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. McDonald. My name is Micah Gadel. I'm a Regional Emergency Coordinator for Oregon Department of Human Services, the Office of Resilience and Emergency Management, and we provided the tent based on a request from local public health and the emergency manager. This was what we viewed as the most rapid life-saving response we could. While it's not an ideal solution for, you know, the health and safety of those, it is far better than what we had, and is buying us time to find a longer solution. So at this, we've provided the tent, and right now, this is at no cost to the local jurisdictions.
Have you had to, have you provided these types of tents to other communities?
No, sir. You are our very first test case. This, this tent system was actually is not been used before. We're putting it together for a presentation for mass evacuations and how it can be useful in that. And this seemed like a very legitimate, reasonable test case to see what it could do in the next day.
As a mayor, I certainly appreciate your stepping up. The other thing was, I asked about the, why was it placed at the Discovery Center?
So Mayor Mays, I will give you the short answer. They were the only ones who said yes. And we needed it to go up immediately.
Okay, thank you. So obviously, we're into our next agenda item, which is discussing the, the possible moving of the tent. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Kramer or Commissioner Hagee if they would like to address the district staff about this issue at this time. Was that a hand?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
I guess I would. I'm, I'm, I've read some stuff about it. I mean, I'm totally open to the idea of, you know, I think maybe Shelley mentioned, just, you know, working together with the community to find, you know, is it in a location that works? If not, where is a better location? How can we make that happen? I'm not, I'm not opposed to anything. I mean, I, I think that we and our staff just need to work through whatever those, you know, issues and challenges and find a better location, if that's what's needed. I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that at all.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Hagee. I appreciate those comments. Pretty much concur with most of that. But I'm gonna take this opportunity, Madam Chair, if, if a little indulgence, please. This, this particular incident has, has opened the door for the need for a greater conversation. We have got to start dealing with mental and behavioral health at some point in the near future, because I feel as, as this particular incident has proven that this is our major issue, and we have got to, at some point, start talking about this, all of us, and collectively putting our heads together and our resources to get after mental and behavioral health. So with that said, thank you for the time, Madam Chair. To our folks at Public Health District, thank you for all you do. Full favor, in full favor of, of moving to a convenient location to take care of not only our constituents who have come down with the COVID, but for our staff that have to take care of those folks. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Well said. I do have a question for the staff. Where, where do you want the tent? What, what would be ideal for you? Do you have thoughts about that? I knew that initially via email last week, or a couple of days ago, you asked for the tent to specifically be moved to some county property up at the annex area. Is that still your number-one location, or are you considering other locations at this time?
Thank you for that question. So our first ask would be, yes, we thought that having it on the campus at NCPHD in the lower lot would be ideal for our access, not only our access to that for staff, but for volunteers that come by and provide services, as well as for law enforcement and the county in plowing and keeping that area cleaned up from snow and ice. So that would be our first and foremost ask. The second option that we felt was another good solution would be the Lewis &amp; Clark Festival Park, because there are restaurants there, as well as electricity, we think, so that we can have power to the tent. Again, having it in town where also the individuals that need services there or will be placed there, it's a higher comfort level for them, so having them out of town is stressful and makes it uncomfortable for them to stay in that location. In an area where they're already familiar with, makes it more ideal for them to feel comfortable and to stay in that area and isolate or quarantine, so that they don't feel the need to leave and either, I don't know, just go to try to find their tribe. We'll say that.
I had a question, Kathy.
Sure.
Just curiously thinking about the two, I guess, a question maybe that Mayor Mays could answer, but it would be, is that, is that available? I'd be curious to know what the thoughts on that are. And then just thinking about the two of them, are there some pros and cons that you guys have talked about? My first kind of thinking about putting it in the parking lot up by the annex buildings was, would it create some parking issues for, for example, the Public Health District and parole probation? I didn't know if that was gonna be an issue. So those are some of the questions I, I had.
Well, I think currently, at least in our parking in the lower level, many people, at least from parole and probation, I think, have been working remote. I don't know if they're still planning on doing that. There has been ample or enough parking on the upper level for our staff, and we do do testing, drive-through testing up there as well, and so that, I don't see that as an issue. We would certainly need to put up some cones and some safety measures to keep people from moving into that area. I'm sorry, was there, I don't know if that answered the full question or not.
No, that answered the questions. I was just curious, Mayor Mays, obviously you had a discussion with him. I didn't know if the the park down there was, was actually a good option or not.
We did get a request from Shelley to, about Lewis &amp; Clark Park, but I sent out a communication to the rest of the city council about it, but I was told that you know, to back off of that for whatever reason, so I did. I will say that back in October of 2020, no, excuse me, yeah, 2020, when we were trying to cite the pallet shelters. The idea of putting the pallet shelters at Lewis &amp; Clark Park was rejected by the city council pretty much unanimously. They didn't want it there for reasons you could debate, but I do think that a lot has changed since October of 2020, and without committing of the five people that do have a vote in this matter to accepting that as a location, they might think different than they did, what, over a year ago. So Zen, is your question, Scott?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Rich. Appreciate that. One other thought, question I've, and obviously, probably can't answer, but any idea about the term of like, how long we think this might need to be up? Obviously, this isn't a, this is not gonna be a kind of a long-term thing, but any, any thoughts on that?
I can jump into that, just because, so as I mentioned, currently, we're experiencing an outbreak within this specific population. And of course, it's winter time, so we're thinking outbreaks usually last around four weeks, so very, very temporarily, that's kind of the, that's sort of the thinking that we have, that maybe an additional three weeks or so for this very specific need. Now, winter's going to continue. Other people in this population will continue to need shelter and not have an adequate place to stay, but at least for this very urgent need for a larger number. That's the anticipation for the tent, and then I hope, like, if you have the opportunity, if you could speak a little bit more about some medium-sized term options, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be very brief on this. I'll be going this morning to check out a local supplier in Willamette Valley that is making their portable shelters, you know, essentially eight-by-nine picture, nice fishing shack with bunks, heat source, lockable. We're looking at those as a pilot option specifically in isolation and quarantine options, because that is a reimbursable method right now. And then that be used as a continuum of care option within the communities, similar to an upgrade in a pallet shelter. So that's what I'm going to look at this morning, and that could be a really pretty short-term turnaround. And that could be a really pretty short-term turnaround. So, you know, a tent would not have to be a longer term. But that is going to have to be, you know, very locally supported and a plan in place and a place to be able to do them before, you know, we could ever commit to providing those. So this is a, we can help resource, but it's ultimately a community solution. We would love to help support it though.
And if I can just preemptively answer a question that I think many people will have. What about housing? These people are putting it somewhere near the pallet shelters and the main issue there currently, the people who are housed at the pallet shelters, they have, are very, very well able to comply with the rules of being at the pallet shelters. There have been no COVID cases there. And there are some behavioral issues. A lot of the people who are looking to shelter are not eligible to spend time at the pallet shelters. So just wanted to put that out there. As to, as to why, and they are full, but it's the other reason as well, but just to why we wouldn't cite a tent exactly right next to the pallet shelter.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm just gonna, I was, sorry, I was just gonna note that Cindy Gentry from the PUD had put some comments in the chat there. So for folks that can't see them or didn't see them, you know, obviously they're, they're willing and trying to work with us. They obviously need to be involved in the, you know, where's it going to go to make sure that where it goes, if power needs to get there, that they can, they can hopefully get it there.
Okay, thank you. Right now it's 9:32 and we do need to go on to our fee schedule ordinance hearing. I want to be sure and stay on track for that. But I'd really like for the district staff and Micah, if possible, to hang in there with us for a few minutes because I really hope that we can come to some resolution on this issue today. Because I think this is an emergency issue for our health district and I think we probably need a further discussion on pros and cons, especially if we're, we're seriously looking at the annex parking lot as your number one choice, given that it doesn't sound like the Lewis and Clark Park is going to be an option. So with that, can you guys stay for, until we get through this ordinance hearing, everybody? Shelley, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to move us along and I'm going to recess our regular meeting to open the first of two public hearings regarding amendments to the Wasco County Fee Schedule Ordinance. An official recording is being made of what is said at this hearing. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard. Therefore, persons addressing the commission are requested to begin by stating their name and address. Speak clearly. Only one person may speak at a time. This is the time for presentation of testimony. No debate is allowed. So the order of presentation will be staff presentation, testimony from anyone wishing to speak, and questions from the commission. So Kathy, will you be our staff presenter?
I will, and this will be very brief. You have seen these increases when we did the major part of the fee schedule ordinance update. This was delayed because there are some state parameters around how we do this that lengthens the process. So while you were introduced to these increases in December, actually in October, and we couldn't bring them to you for approval until now. So these are very much in line with the other increases that we had across the other departments. They are within the CPI, I believe, and here for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there any other staff to present or was that just you, Kathy?
Just me.
Okay. At this time, we'll move on to public testimony and comment. Are there any written materials that have been submitted?
We received none.
Thank you. And does anyone wish at this time to be heard? Anyone in the audience? This is your moment to speak about our fee schedule. I don't see any hands up. Do you, Kathy?
I don't.
Okay, going, going, gone. All right. How about at this time, any commissioner may ask any questions or speak to staff on the issues?
I had a quick question. Just how, so I mean, obviously with this fee ordinance, we have an ordinance here, so we're going to have to read it by, read it title only, hopefully. Did, how did we get the word out that this is underway? And I guess primarily my question, it seems like with the building code fees, somehow there's a list that this is sent out to so that the people most impacted get it or something. Is that true?
So we, I send it to the state building codes office and they distribute it. And that's part of the timeline. They, we have to let them know 45 days in advance of our effective date or our, our hearing date. And that is what allows the time for, and they distribute it out to all of those people. So.
Okay. And we notice it normally and it's available on our website. Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. Excellent. I have no further questions.
That was a great question. Thank you, Scott. Commissioner Kramer, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No questions. I'll just go ahead and unless you have any questions, I will go ahead and read if you're okay with that.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so in the matter of amending Wasco County's uniform fee schedule for various county departments, ordinance 22-001, first reading.
Is that it?
That's it. That's all we need, except for you can close the hearing.
Okay, at this time we will close the public hearing. Thank you. All right. Now we've got some more time. And so Dr. McDonald and Shelley and Micah want to come back up? And we can continue this discussion around the COVID positive houseless warming tent and the relocation of it. Now, Commissioner Kramer and Commissioner Hagee, maybe you have a few more minutes to think of more questions and before I, you know, head into mine.
I, I don't have any more questions. I was gonna, I was thinking that maybe one possibility, I think we could direct our staff and or whoever we deem to direct to basically work in conjunction, you know, with the folks that have been working on it already. I, I don't have a problem with it going at any of the locations mentioned. I just think that that group could potentially work out what is best for, you know, the community and this population and the workers and everything else. I, I, I think either of them or, or other ones that might be out there are fine. I have no problem and I, I guess, I would, I would be very comfortable directing our staff to, to work through that with the group.
Commissioner Kramer, did you have any further comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I agree with Commissioner Hagee on that. And, and as I stated early on, when, when this first came to my email, correspondence with Director Campbell, as long as policy, procedure and legal have all been met, I'm fine with, with directing staff. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had another question for Micah. Would you mind just kind of going over again what you were talking about? Did you say there was some other alternative? Could you just elaborate a little bit? I don't think I caught all of that. Sorry.
Okay, what it is, is I'm not sure. Originally, I'm from the Midwest, so my best correlation is it's an ice fishing shack.
Got it.
So it's inside, it's eight by nine, it's set on a pallet, a plastic pallet for forklift ability, a two by four wall, moisture resistant drywall, slope shed, lockable front door. The Oregon Correctional Enterprises does the bunk beds for them. It's wired for 110. The R value is better than some of the earlier, we had some earlier prototypes that were just fold down, knock down, but snow load in your location, it's not going to be sufficient. So they went back and relooked at these. So it'll be my first look at a finished one here this morning. One of the attractive portions to this is cost-wise, from our perspective, with one person on average hotel fees, it, it completely pays itself off in under a two-month period. You know, that's what the singular person in isolation quarantine. So, you know, statewide perspective, we're doing this all over. This could be a very economic method of doing isolation and quarantine. And then it has the benefit of being potentially a longevity, a longer-term solution for the homeless crisis that we're seeing all over the place. So that's why from our perspective, we're very interested in this. It is a resource that we could potentially improve the conditions because ultimately what you referred to is the behavioral health and mental health side of services that we have to be able to get to improve their condition and a safe, safer position like this only contributes to that potential success. Kathy, I think you're talking, but on mute.
Love that. Did you say that it possibly wouldn't work here because of our snow loads? Did you say that?
The, the first version that we were using, it was completely a knockdown version. So it came in just a stack. And then we determined that it just, it wouldn't work in, you know, anywhere east of the Cascades. So this one is a more, a little bit more traditional builds, building style, two by four drywall, you know, completely waterproof. It's got, you know, fire ratings and such, but it's not designed as a tiny home.
I see. And how many people could accommodate? I'm sorry?
Two personnel.
Oh, okay. Similar to a pallet shelter.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an upgraded, it's using a tiny home concept with a pallet or pallets, shelter, you know, application.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, I just, from my point of view, I really, I really think we should accommodate the request to move the tent to the most convenient location for the health district, yet to be determined. And I agree that we need to the direct staff to really look at this and try to come up with, you know, the most convenient location possible. Obviously, this is, having it out at the discovery center is really, was probably set up in an emergency situation without having the time to think through all of the pros and cons of being out there, not at a time when the weather looked like it did yesterday and today and whatnot, and not being able to fully anticipate all of the problems that putting it out there have, you know, come to light. So in the interest of the absolute safety and security of the staff, as you can imagine, as Shelley mentioned, going out there every eight hours to fill the generator around the clock. This is late at night. I've had anecdotal reports and, and Dr. McDonald's encounter, but that her husband's gone out to fill it. I've had anecdotal reports that we've sent staff out there with their, with their parents to, for safety issues. In the, in, so this isn't sustainable and I think it's actually quite urgent that we get this tent moved to a place that is more convenient. And I want to, you know, we can get into, you know, the pros and cons, but I think we'll direct staff to do that and to find the most convenient location. But I want to also bring up that our district staff, if you haven't noticed earlier today, they're in the middle of an Omicron surge and an emergency. And the, the staff capacity is extremely limited and having to drive back and forth to the discovery center, whether we get power out there or paved roads is definitely an improvement for the very, very short term. But the capacity is extremely limited right now. We need all hands on deck for this emergency, community emergency. And I think that bringing the, the tent closer into town, whether it be on our annex property or somewhere very near is a very good idea and we should do everything we can as a county to accommodate that. And just, you know, no matter where we put this, people aren't going to be happy. There's always going to be some cons, as Commissioner Hagee mentioned, such as neighborhoods and, you know, things like that. But I do think that we have to recognize that this is an emergency situation. And we can't, this, it isn't going to be ideal for everyone. So, you know, whatever we can do as a county, let's, let's get this solved and let's get it solved quickly for the district. That's, that's my opinion. So.
Commissioner Swartz, Schwartz, this is Fritz Bachman, Community Corrections Director. I have some info. You're familiar with it, but I'm happy to fill in any, if you would like about community corrections and bridges to change.
I'm sure. Go ahead.
I can keep it brief. I'm totally supportive. Yes, we are at like three quarters staffing situation here. So, you know, we're, we're busy and active here. There's certainly room at the parking lot. We could make room and it, it would fit and work. I did reach out to Bridges to Change. My office would make it work and face any challenges head on and it would be fine. Bridges to Change expressed concern with a couple of known individuals with mental health concerns that I believe have been or are staying in the tent potentially. So they had concerns about being a neighbor and these individuals who had been residents at the house and had had issues or actually booted from the house. That was their concern, but they recognized the landowner and the necessity. So anyway, we will work with it. I personally would probably prefer the Lewis and Clark Park, but I understand needing to make a decision. So I'll leave it at that unless you have questions.
I don't have any questions. I appreciate that, Fritz. Yeah. Commissioner Hagee?
Well, I was just gonna say, the one thing that's I'm hearing is important is having electrical connection. I think wherever it's at, if, if we have additional work to go, be, you know, fueling a generator, that doesn't make any sense. So I think, you know, making sure that wherever it goes, there is a, a good connection for the power. I think that would be an important thing. And again, I just, I think our staff can work with the group of folks out there, including the mayor, to see if they can find the best location for it. And again, I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem. And I would remind people that this is temporary. It's not a long-term thing. It's, you know, it's actually a fairly short kind of situation. It's an emergency and I think we need to do it quickly.
Okay, so I think the three of us are in consensus that we'll direct staff to work with the health district and get this tent moved to a more appropriate location as soon as possible.
I'll agree to that as Madam Chair, as long as, as we're, we're, we make sure that temporary is, is the main ingredient here because I heard, I've heard two issues in this conversation, short-term and long-term with pallet houses. So I'm, I've got a little bit of concern as where we're directing staff. So as long as it's to move the tent temporarily to take care of our, our staff and our infected individuals in the community, I'm, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification, Commissioner Kramer. I agree. Yeah. All right. Any further comments from the district staff or?
I would, I don't know if this is the place to discuss it. I do know that some of the barriers about moving it was regarding liability and insurance and things like that. And I don't know how we can address those and support that conversation because that, with anything tends to prolong a solution and how we address that. And I don't know from the state's point of view around the liability of the tent. Micah can speak to that. And then just on the last note, Mayor Mays has his hands up as well. Micah, do you want to, or?
The liability is not an issue. We, we are accepting liability for any of the damages and we understand the risk in the environment that it's being used, but it's the right decision to do. We will have someone from the company that we purchased this from, that will be available for a technical assistance to help move, just to make sure that it's done correctly and there are no damages to it. I've got a text into him now on how soon you can have someone there.
Thank you, Micah. I think that, you know, part of directing staff to work on this would have our legal counsel involved as well for any other kinds of liabilities that, that we all aren't thinking of right now. So, and Mayor Mays, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just a few brief closing remarks. I'd like to follow up briefly on Commissioner Kramer's remarks at the beginning of this discussion. I think he described this as being the biggest problem facing our community. And he also described it as being a mental health crisis. I agree 100% with both of those comments. We talked about the issues that are facing the health district and their staffing. CFL is also going through similar issues. I think we all have to understand and maybe it hasn't been emphasized enough. I think we all have to understand, and maybe it hasn't been emphasized enough, that the reason that these people ended up at the Discovery Center is because they were evicted from a hotel in Hood River for behavioral issues. And the resources that have been dedicated, time and and everything else toward a handful of people has been kind of astonishing. However, it has, it does have to be dealt with. The Dallas unhoused task community, the task force that I formed 10 months ago has been meeting for 10 months. It's made up of stakeholders from the city, county, St. Vincent de Paul, the faith community, Mid Columbia Community Action, the Housing Authority, CFL and law enforcement. I think we've accomplished enough, a lot, but we haven't accomplished enough. And the reason is, in my opinion, that our group, well meaning as it is, has no money and has no authority. And if this is the problem, the biggest problem we have in our community, I do think we need more of a centralized authority to deal with this issue, being the most difficult and most important problem we have as well as throughout Oregon. And I'd just like to see a maybe a more centralized authority group committed to this issue that has both funding and has authority. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Appreciate that. Okay, well, I think we're going to go ahead and move on to our next agenda item. Thank you so much. Dr. McDonald and Shelley and Micah for being here as well as the mayor. Just again, want to thank you for your service. I do happen to know that Shelley and Dr. McDonald were out working over Christmas Eve and Christmas on this issue. And I especially want to acknowledge your heroic efforts throughout this pandemic and definitely through this holiday season, taking care of our absolutely most vulnerable population that we have. So thank you. All right. So we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the JRI Grant Agreement. So Fritz, you're still with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this is really quite brief because I already presented the application that we submitted to the Criminal Justice Commission. And it's, I know it's really late into the fiscal year and the biennium at this point. It's commonly not approved until October or November. This year, it it we didn't get final approval from the commission until December. So we're only now getting it on the agenda. We had, as you had been, as I'd made you aware of last year, we applied for everything that we had in the past and years past to the largest extent that we could to maintain the programs that we are currently doing. That is programs at Norcore, our transitional housing, some specialty court efforts and victim services support. So the the amount that we were approved was a little less than we received last biennium, and that's only because our the calculation for the money is based on our supervision caseloads, which have dropped. So last biennium, we had received a total of 613,000 and change. And what we were approved of for this biennium was 570,000 and change. It's the full amount that we asked for and that we are eligible to receive. So it's very good news. The programs haven't changed, but the commission recognizes that we're doing great work. We're providing good reporting outcomes and we're showing good work and results. So kudos to all the partners involved with this. So this presentation really is to confirm that we did receive the grant award as expected and applied for. And what they need really is a final signature on the contract. The contract is not much different from past bienniums. No changes in the need for the program's implementations. They are asking for a little more on my end in the reporting end for data. But that's completely doable and they want to know that we're addressing equality and equity issues. So that's really the extent of it. And I think if you have other questions about what we're doing and where we're going, I think we were all synced up on it last fall, but that's it.
Okay, questions or comments, Commissioners?
I had a question. I'm not sure if it is, it's not specifically related here, but it's related to Sherman County. So I'm assuming Sherman County has a similar agreement that they have with the state and those funds will somehow float in somewhat towards us. Is that is that correct?
It is separate from the grant and aid money, which does come to my office. So the the grant and aid that comes from Department of Corrections to Community Corrections, the proportion that goes to Sherman County is coming to my office to cover the proportion of staff and programs that we utilize for Sherman County. This justice reinvestment is wholly separate. So Sherman County applied separately for their county for these funds, and they are using them for their own victim services and prevention outreach work and work some work crew programming. So that is not part of this and none of that money directly goes to Wasco County or my office for any work that we're doing. We do collaborate on some work crew efforts. Aside from that, though, Sherman's justice reinvestment isn't benefiting my office.
Gotcha. Thanks, Fritz.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yeah, I have I have no, no questions, Madam Chair. And so I'll move to approve the Criminal Justice Commission. Let me start over. I move to approve the Criminal Justice Commission Justice Reinvestment Grant Program Grant Agreement.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion's approved. Thank you, Fritz. It's really nice to see you.
Yes, I know. I'm I'm back in the office full time. I I had been working intermittently and remotely the past three months raising our baby, but she's doing great. And we got daycare figured out, so I'm I'm back in the office full time. There had been some discussion over the grant and aid funding that comes to my office. And the state had basically asked for more information and some narrative and explanation related to COVID and some jail funding. Some of you may already know, but that was ultimately approved as well. So the contract was already signed. But if there was any question about that, just just know that our grant and aid, the bulk of our funding for parole and probation, that was also approved by the state and we're moving forward from there. So all is good.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we're going to move on then to our OEM Grant Agreement. And is Sheridan with us? Oh, I see that he is. Can you pop on video, Sheridan, so we can see you? Oh, there you are.
Hello.
Thank you. Are you going to go ahead, Sheridan?
Yes, so for the MPG grant, there was submitted on. This is for essentially for the emergency management position as well as the general office supplies and workshops training and so on and so forth, which comes to about 133,650 with the match required from the county of 66,825. Do you have any questions about the actual grant itself or the funding requested?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioners. Any questions for Sheridan?
Sure. It's not really a question, but I just confirming. So this is the the primary kind of base funding for our emergency operation services. This is the grant that the that the count that the state gives out to all counties. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner Hagee, this is the kind every county gets gets a certain amount based on the population. And I think there's also a base amount that everybody gets as well. But we are a little bit below the what we actually get. So again, the the match that we are requesting is 66,825.
Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Kramer? No? Okay. Sheridan, does the match just come out of general fund? Is that is that a Wasco County match that we put forward? Is that how that works? Do you know?
Oh, yes. It's actually 50% match requirement by the state to the county. And yes, that 66,000 is what's going to be required by Wasco County to pay. And this is for the salary as well as supplies, training and other items as well.
Thank you. And you are a staff of one, right? For emergency management for all of the county. That's a that's a big job and you do it well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Commissioners or comments, or anybody want to move forward a motion?
I would move to approve the OEM Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement 21-533.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, here and then, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Thank you, Sheridan. Again, nice to see you too. It's been a while.
Commissioners, I really appreciate it.
Okay, great. Okay, so it's 10 o'clock. We're right on time. How about that? Don't don't count out that I'm not lasting, but looks like Andrew, you're up next for Mid Columbia Center for Living Services Agreement. Hi.
Good morning. Thank you, Andrew Burke, Information Services Director. So I am really, I'm bringing to you a contract that that we're working up, and this is very much in draft, to provide services to Mid Columbia Center for Living Information Services to them for the next 12 months to help to help them through a difficult time. And really, you've seen the memo and the and the contract. And so kind of what I want to highlight here is this this contract very much is about a statement of work model where as we provide services and new projects come up, we are able to make build out statements of work that will that will allow us to provide those services without loss of resources on the county end to make sure that MCCFL has what they need. And so we can, we can build those statements of work out based on the projects that come up. And so I wanted to really highlight that here and and then really open up for questions if you have questions about this contract and and what I'm looking for, what I'm looking to do is is to bring this to the Center for Living Board as well to get their feedback on it and then build out a finalized version that both entities can agree to.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, Commissioners, questions, comments for Andrew? This is something new for us, right?
This is, this is, this is very new. Yes, we are treading some new waters.
I had a question. Are we already, because we've been, we're actually doing these services, some subset of these services for Mid Center for Living now, correct?
Yeah, we we are, we are in a in an emergency capacity, kind of helping out with with some of these services, but primarily I am as a as a second job, I am, I am at Center for Living at this time trying to help them out as much as possible outside of Wasco County time as well.
Okay, so I was curious, like in terms of this agreement's not in place and I kind of specifically related to the section five under the statement of work sliding fee schedule. So we haven't like entered into any of those periods yet. Is that correct? Would those periods would start when this was signed and agreed upon?
Correct.
Okay. And so this is what's proposed basically to start by charging them the fees in here, but then they would be kind of ratcheted down or ratcheted up from 25%?
Yeah, over the over the next 12 months upon execution of the agreement. And so, yeah, and so really this this establishes those those written guidelines, guardrails of sorts that in regards to IS services provided by the county to Center for Living.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to hear from Mr. Stone and Ms. Campbell if they have any comments about this document and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I would just say, you know, this is actually a concept that we've been working on for a number of years, long before Center for Living had a need to really kind of create a more for lack of a better term, a regional IT solutions group for municipal agencies. We think that that in our ability to do that, we can bring specialization into the information technology department, which allows us then to have much better service, not only for Wasco County, but for the partners that we help to serve. And so this is, you know, the current situation in Center for Living gives us the opportunity to kind of test that out. And if it is a viable option, then, you know, we would look at trying to expand that to some of our other partners that have, you know, smaller information, kind of generalist departments. So so that's kind of the concept there. I think this gives us a good opportunity to work out some of those details in it while we're still providing a service to Center for Living. And as Commissioner Hagee asked earlier, we haven't been charging for these services up to this point. And recognizing the financial trajectory that Mid Columbia Center for Living has, you know, we would scale these in over time to try to help that situation. So I'm all for giving it a try. I think I can't, I can't remember, Andrew, but it was thousands of dollars to contract these services out to the to the private sector. I want to say 18,000 was the number.
Yeah, that was, that was the new number that was provided to Center for Living with their previous IT support. Sorry, if I if I could speak to that as well, I really do want to highlight that that regarding the costs related to what you see in the statement of work, that is very much based on a cost analysis that was performed with with finance last year for IT services at Wasco County. And so we are providing these services not at a loss, but really at cost.
Yeah, so it's a, it seems to be a win for both organizations in the sense that we get some more specialized staff here at here at Wasco County. And, you know, Mid Columbia Center for Living gets the service level that that they need. So like I said, this is, it's a trial. And if it works out, you know, then we would explore looking at some other entities that may have that same need.
Okay, did Commissioner Kramer, did you have a question for our legal counsel on that as well or?
I just, just if if Ms. Campbell had anything to add to any of this. Thank you.
So this is one of those fairly rare occasions where I did have a conflict. And in those cases, I am, we refer out to Conflict Counsel, who is Barry Elsner out of Portland, a municipal specific law firm. I know we did that in this instance, and I have full confidence that they've thoroughly vetted this. I would defer to to Tyler if there were any further comments from a legal perspective.
Yeah, I think we've crossed all of our Ts and dotted all of our Is in this particular one.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Just FYI, Tyler, you really, you might need to speak up a little bit. I I definitely caught most of it, but it's it's the volume's pretty low for you. So my only comments are, you know, I just really appreciate Wasco County doing this. And you know, it just kind of goes back to what Commissioner Kramer said earlier about the mental health crisis that we are in. And this is one way that Wasco County is stepping up to really assist our Wasco County is stepping up to really assist our local um mental health provider, get um, for lack of a better term, healthier. And I appreciate the sliding fee scale that's um being um. You know, proposed here, um just so, you know, uh they can get up and running and. We're not going to be charging them the full pop right, right out of the, you know, out of the chute. So let's get them up and running and healthy and able to better serve. Our local community. So um this, this looks really great to me, so. With that, if there's no other comments or questions, um would either of you like to make a motion?
I don't know that we need a motion. And Commissioner Hagy, you have a conflict here, so you'll have to.
Oh.
Abstain from that.
Well, Madam Chair, all due respect, Mr. Stone, this seems like it's a um service agreement, so maybe we should have um. A motion on to uh proceed.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to point out the uh conflict before you headed that direction.
Right, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Stone. So, Madam Chair, I move to approve the Wasco County Information Services. Master Service Agreement between Wasco County and Mid Columbia Center for Living.
Um I'll go ahead and second that. Further discussion, um just a question, Commissioner Hagy, can you explain your conflict?
Yeah, so I I I think what Tyler's referring to is I'm actually also a board member on Center for Living, so. I don't think, uh I mean, Kristen can address it. There's not a, there's not really a financial conflict of interest. I'm not going to benefit personally in any way. Uh but, you know, just so people know that I I'm kind of on both sides, as many of us are on both sides, so I'll probably just abstain from the vote.
Okay, thank you. So any other further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And any abstain?
I'll abstain.
Okay, okay, the motion passes. Uh thank you very much, Andrew, and just a personal thank you for um. Helping me out this week with my home internet and computer problems. You really saved me, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And poor Andrew is now my neighbor, so um I feel really comfortable picking on him. When we're stuck at home, so thank you. All right. Okay, I'm looking at the time here. Looks like our next agenda item has been pulled. So at this time, it looks like we still have thirty-some folks on the call, so I think I'd like to. Open up um to our audience for any um public comment. If anyone would like to comment at this time. Please do so and state your name and address, please. Any hands raised, Kathy, that you can see?
I don't see any.
No, I don't either. I just want to thank everyone for being here. It's just always great to have thirty-some participants on our, on our Zoom calls. It uh it's really great, even though I don't see all your faces. It's just nice to know that you're here and you're engaged and participatory, so thank you. Okay, I think when, are we ready to move on to our Medicaid one-one-one-five waiver? It looks like Molly is here. Ah, there you are. Hi, Molly.
Hi, uh Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. I believe that you're all familiar with the eleven fifteen waiver Medicaid, which. Um I'm not sure, I I I've been with Wasco County almost twenty years, and I know that I started working on this before I um joined Wasco County. And it really is um continuity of care for youth who are placed in detention to not lose their Medicaid services while they're in detention. And there's a subsequent, uh on a parallel system, there's an adult. Request as well. And so this is really just the public comment open for the Oregon Health Authority. As they put in their twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven eleven fifteen waiver to allow Oregon to um maintain coverage or allow us to. Offer coverage for uh youth as well as adults for prejudicatory, pre-trial, uh short-term incarceration. So as um Department of Youth Services Director, I've submitted written testimony. Um and the memo that you have before you today is just. For the Wasco County to submit written testimony for the Oregon Health Policy Board to hear before they submit. The eleven fifteen waiver to the federal government. I believe it's covered in there, however, in, you'll notice that I have asked for just. A couple clarity statements. One is articulating juvenile detention facilities. And not lumping them into local correctional facilities, just in case. There is a tight understanding that a local correctional facility is only for adults. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, but that's a little background and a reason why you have the memo in front of you today.
Great, thank you. How about some questions or comments from commissioners? Scott, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a a question necessarily, but just a comment that um Molly is a very strong advocate of this, obviously. It makes a lot of sense. I mean, for folks that don't quite understand, it's, it's always very frustrating when you have somebody who is basically um. Been arrested, they are in the process of being adjudicated, but they're not yet um. You know, charged, so they're not guilty. You know, this is the whole idea of they're not guilty until proven so. So when they're not guilty. Why do they lose all their health coverage? And it's the same thing in the adult side and the juvenile side, and I think. What Molly's trying to do is make sure that the, we don't forget the juveniles because the same situation uh is in the juvenile side, and Molly reminds me of that often and. Tells me to make comments, so I just want to thank her for being such a great advocate for what she does, so thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kramer?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna have to start going first one of these times, so. Yeah, Molly is um a wonderful advocate for this, and we've been working on this for probably longer than Scott and I've been around and. And um we um, we really got to make a change so that um we don't burden our counties, so thank you.
Sorry, Steve, I, you know, coming off the being the chair, I got to talk a lot, so now I I'm trying to moderate my style, so. You you gotta call, start calling out Steve, I'll I'll keep my mouth shut.
Yeah, he's just got to unmute before you. That's all. That's, you know, how this Zoom thing works, I think. So I see our district attorneys popped up. Do you have a comment, Matt?
Um just, I I do support Molly in this, that it's uh, I, obviously, the moment I've been very, very much advocates for the juvenile side. And uh it's uh, you've talked, we've challenged a little bit about this prior that I I I support that for, which is given to the commissioner, so then.
Thank you very much. Um I do have a question, Molly. Um. When they submit the waiver, like this has been going on for so long, is it the feds that are denying this particular request over and over and over?
Yeah, so Chair Schwartz, we've actually never really had it in the waiver. We had uh Senator Hansel and I worked on Senate Bill six forty-one in the two thousand nineteen legislative session, and we had it in the waiver. And then there was an emergency kind of rush to get the waiver approved by the federal government, and so they pulled it out at the last minute. This is actually the first time that Oregon will have it in the waiver when it is submitted to the federal government.
And it is for youth and adult?
It it is. So the um National Sheriffs Association through NACO has been working on this for a a few years for the adult side. Because that's truly where the money is when it comes to cost to counties for medical coverage in facilities. And um. And so, yes, the adult side is also addressed in the eleven fifteen um waiver application. And there's always just this, oh, yes, and juveniles. Um and so what I'm asking in our letter is that we don't do, and oh, yes, it's juveniles, we actually really. Call it out and and call it out very clearly. For that purpose. I mean, a quick example, um Chair, is we have a young person currently who's in our facility who needs glasses and who has Oregon Health Plan. And while they're in our facility, the only way that young person can get glasses is if the county of jurisdiction pays for those glasses. That's something simple, but it's definitely um is a great example of the gap.
Absolutely. Um certainly, you know, being on the North Corps Board, I'm well aware of the medical expenses that we incur. Because folks aren't, are they're denied their medical coverage while they're in custody, so. It's a, it's an incredible burden on counties, for sure, so. Thank you for the letter. Um is it something we just need consensus on? Yeah. Okay, so.
I support.
Yeah, me too. And it looks like I have a thumbs up from Commissioner Kramer. Thank you, Molly, for your, for your work on this. Really appreciate it year after year. Maybe we're actually going to be successful this time, do you think?
You know, I I have to admit that I will um be able to say I have my legacy project done if this is turned in.
Don't even think about retiring after that.
I'm not. This has just been one of those.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Molly. Thank you very much. Um. Time-wise, it looks like we have a few extra minutes before we get to the EDC priority list. So I think I'm going to go to our discussion items, and um how about we move to the museum commission appointment? And let's see. Is there anyone, Kathy, are you gonna, are you gonna?
That'll be me.
Okay.
Um so this is, they have a couple of vacancies on the museum commission, and. They recently reviewed this application and put it forward for approval. They support the appointment. Of Don Rasmussen to the Fort Dells Museum Commission.
Great. Is Don with us? I don't think.
I do not believe so.
Okay, I think many of us know Don. Certainly, um always wonderful when someone steps up and wants to volunteer for one of our uh committees, so. Commissioners?
I would make, uh in the matter of the appointment of Don Rasmussen's to, Don Rasmussen to the Wasco County, the Dells Museum Commission Order Number. One-eight dash zero-three-nine, I would make that motion.
It's actually the, the number on the order is incorrect. I fixed it since then. If you go look at the motion, it's correct. I think it's twenty-two zero-zero-one.
Yep, sorry. I move, let me start over. I move to approve Order twenty-two dash zero-zero-one, appointing Don Rasmussen to the Fort Dells Museum Commission. How about that?
Perfect. I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. And and thank you for Doc, to Don Rasmussen, in absentia. Thank you. Okay, um next thing is the opioid agreements. I think we have time to cover that, and I do think, will that be Kristen talking to us?
Yeah, yeah, hi. So as you're aware, we've kind of been shepherding this um. National opioid litigation for the last year, year and a half. And we've um, we've reached the point where the litigating entities have reached a settlement with the opioid distributors. As you recall, we, along with most of the Oregon entities, opted to not be active litigating counties on account of the. Potential for pretty significant attorney's fees. However, the litigating entities did reach a settlement with the distributors. Part of the settlement, part of the distributor's um settlement demand was that um. The settlement encompassed the non-litigating entities nationwide as well. And so what this means for us is that if this settlement is approved. And if there is enough support from the non-litigating entities as well. We are in line for settlement proceeds from the National Opioid Litigation. What that would mean for Wasco County at this point is between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars. Over a nine-to-eighteen-year period earmarked for opioid um mitigation measures. Um. So our alternatives here are to go ahead and sign on with the settlement and receive these funds. In addition to these direct funds, the State of Oregon will also have a fund set aside that would allow. Us to apply for some additional funds. The seven to eight hundred thousand are direct to Wasco County. Um. The alternative is to not sign on and forego the funds. Um. It's my advice at this point that we go ahead and sign on to the settlement. This also gives the, the litigating parties who have done a lot of the work, the. The so, the mass support they need to get this finalized. Um, this would be, the deadline for signing on is January twenty-sixth. The distributors would then have a week to decide whether they feel like they have enough. Enough of the critical mass to go ahead and finalize the settlement. If that were to happen, the flow of funds could start as early as April of this year.
Commissioner Kramer, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, uh Ms. Campbell, the way I, the way I read my packet, it looks like there's three agreements that we have to sign.
Okay, yeah, so there are, there are, there are actually two agreements. They're, they're. Basically identical, but the distributors have each reached their, a separate agreement. Um, they're, they're essentially identical agreements, but um, there's. There's one agreement for, um, it looks like McKinson and Cardinal are, have, have joined in one, and then another agreement for Johnson and Johnson. But the terms are, are the same.
And Kristen, isn't there a third agreement with state?
Yeah, the allocation distribution with, with the state. Yep, that's right. And that's, that's just, that's signing on to um, to the allocation. That was based essentially on population of cities and counties.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hagy?
No questions for me.
Oh, great. Okay, well, I have, I have um, I guess, a couple of questions. Um. So um I, what kinds of services would qualify like for this money? Like, are we, is it pretty broad, like? Are youth think program possibly, or law enforcement, community corrections? Um, those kinds of services. I mean, it is scripted, that it has to go specifically to. People that are, staff that are working towards um addiction prevention.
That's right. And there is a fairly significant um breadth of leeway in what would qualify for those um. For those mitigation um expenditures.
Ah, okay. And with the state allocation, is there allocation over this long term as well? So it's not one lump sum that we are signing on for, or is it over fifteen, twenty years like the other?
It is, it it's my understanding that that is also staggered.
Okay, um, okay, well, not to beat a dead horse, but I'm going to go ahead. Um, oh, that's such a terrible term. Um, you know, on, like what Commissioner Kramer, you know, has been saying all along. I mean, this is just so frustrating because. You know, this is uh this opioid, these drug companies is what's caused so much of our suffering in our local communities. And this is just a drop in the bucket that we are receiving once again. Not enough to really counter the damage that's been done, so thank you for allowing me to.
Yeah.
Preach a little bit, um but it is incredibly frustrating. Um, this is, this is the world we're, we're living in, so I'll, I'll stop there, but. Any further questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, I, it looks like we do need to, um, do we make just one motion, Kathy? Is that right? Yes.
Um, yes, I believe that I've kind of made a compound motion in there that authorizes uh the administrative officer to sign this. Kristen has advised that there's likely to be a couple of little um. Addendums to this as we move through, and they are docu-sign documents, so. If you can authorize Tyler to do that, then he'll get into the docu-sign system and and move on your um direction.
Okay, uh anybody want to make a motion?
I would move to approve the opioid settlement agreements as presented and to authorize Wasco County's administrative officer. To effectuate and execute the settlements under the general terms outlined in the documents presented today.
Thank you, and I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all was in favor, please say aye.
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 And Chair votes aye. Thank you, Kristen. Thank you, Kathy, for always putting these things together and organized for us to move through. to move through.
Kathy, you're muted.
Okay, thank you Kathy. Let's go ahead and move to the consent agenda if we don't mind, get that done. Can I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, if I may, there was a Scrivener's error and I've forgotten the page. I believe the, the word says reset. I believe the word should be rest. And I will get with Kathy to, I forgot to write down the page, but I'll move to approve consent agenda with that change.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Hope, let's see, is Carrie on the call? There she is. Yeah, hi Carrie.
Good morning.
Yeah, so EDC priority list and quarterly report. You are up. Nice to see you.
Yeah, you as well. Thank you for having me this morning. So we'll start with the priority list. This is the Economic Development Commission's annual community enhancement and project process that we worked through this fall. And so what we're requesting from you all is some input on that draft list that the EDC developed in December. And then acknowledgement of that list as you would like to, to do so. So you can make changes if you would like as well. So do a little background on the process and how it went this year. And then happy to take in questions on the list itself. So as, as usual, this is a really good chance for the Economic Development Commission, both staff and the commission members to engage with communities across the county. It's a good chance annually to check in on their priorities. And learn a little bit about where some of their projects that we've been less involved with in the past year have gotten. And for the EDC, I think that's helpful in understanding sort of the current state of, of those projects across the county and also helping us determine through our committee structures and staff time where we want to allocate some of our technical assistance resource that you all support every year. So we, we worked through this process now with these local project meetings. And so held meetings in November and Duffer, the Dals, Mopin, Mosher, and then in Valley for kind of that incorporated areas in South County, as well as invites to, you know, open Chanico for those. And had a, a good chance to talk with entities that serve each of those communities. And I think it's also helpful for them. They get to hear a little bit about what's going on with other entities in their own communities as well. We had thirty five projects come forward from twenty two entities that participated in those processes. And the EDC then takes those projects and those local priority rankings and looks at through the lens of the criteria noted, addressing economic development challenges or opportunities, prioritizing investment in critical infrastructure. Looking at readiness to proceed and then also sort of the impact and timeliness of inclusion on that list for folks that are looking for funding to help develop a draft. Other considerations that the EDC usually takes into account in that conversation. Look at really thinking about that impact and, and opportunities for project owners to leverage the list for advocacy. And then also balancing sort of geographically across the county to ensure that, that communities are incorporated into that list and able to leverage the process. So that's sort of how the list itself comes about. I would also just note that we, again, this year included priority issues. Thinking about some of those bigger picture, longer term challenges or opportunities that the Economic Development Commission sees for community vitality and economic development around the county. And those should look fairly familiar. I think the, the EDC was in consensus that the issues from last year continue to be challenges and so incorporated developable land a little bit more broadly than the previous year with the conversations really focused on urban area boundaries and urban growth boundary in the Dals, but looking at those opportunities across the county, I think is important. Continued challenges with childcare access. Focus on broadband, especially considering the significant resources coming down the pipeline from the feds there. And then continuing to just acknowledge that the housing challenges are having a significant impact on economic development in our business communities and workforce here. So those are sort of the pieces that are before you to take a look at. So is any questions or input on the list itself?
Okay, at this time, Commissioner Kramer, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I finally put my hand up. So Chair, Ms. Pippinich, I understand that the Dog River Pipeline found the funding. Is that correct?
I know they were going to the IFA board to request some additional, but I had not heard the results of that yet.
My only, my only point on that is if, if and, and I, I agree that that should be the number one issue. We've got to get the water down, down to the Dals, absolutely. But if that, if, if they do have the final funding or the resources, then I would suggest that we move that and we move that workforce housing on to the list. So that's just my overall first thoughts here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hagee?
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't have a problem with what Commissioner Kramer said there either. I just, I just wanted to say thanks for, for doing this work. Obviously, there's a lot of stuff here. So the one question I had was down at the bottom, there was additional projects not ranked. And so it's just kind of a general question. I, I think this is, this is really great because I think for particularly our smaller communities, a lot of times they have projects, but they really don't know how to move them forward. They don't really know how to get funding. So I think the work that you guys are doing is, is really incredible. My question is on those additional projects. I know some of them are, but are all of those projects pretty well scoped out? I mean, do they have, you know, something that says this is what the project is and this is what we think it might cost or anything like that? And I, I'm guessing that probably some of them don't, but I think ideally would be great if all of those, you know, were because I think what you guys do is help them, you know, try to pull it together so they have a real project as opposed to just an idea.
Yeah. There's definitely a mix in those additional projects in terms, in terms of project readiness and sort of that scoping piece. I think some of them, most of them are beyond an idea. A few of them are sort of the next project on the list for a community or an entity. And so they know it's coming and they're sort of putting it on the radar, but aren't really ready for inclusion and that sort of priority piece. But it is definitely something as, as we do that work. It's a great opportunity for us to make sure we've got that next project on the list there for support and helping scope or find resources to do feasibility or planning.
Excellent. Yeah, it's just, it's, it's really kind of, it's somewhat gratifying to see people are really thinking ahead and trying to think what do we need and what kind of things could help our community? And, you know, putting it on a list, while it may not do much, just having it on a list, it just kind of raises the awareness that there's something out there. And obviously it raises awareness for you, helping our smaller communities to help them maybe move that forward. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagee. I think that's also been one of the benefits of having these local meetings too, is that you get a little bit more of that what's coming next project conversation than you do in the sort of more formal older process where they were submitting basically paragraphs. And that was the information we were receiving on projects. So it's been a good shift.
Very good. Thank you.
Carrie, I have one question, I guess, or maybe a couple. So when you met with communities, was that virtual?
It was a mix. So some of the smaller communities opted to do an in-person meeting and, you know, they're fairly small, so able to be pretty cautious about, you know, public health requirements and those sorts of things. The Dals opted to do a virtual meeting though.
Oh, okay. And did you have good participation, would you say?
Yeah, we did. Yeah.
Great. And I was wondering if you could elaborate just a little bit on the Duffer Rural Innovation Hub and the Y East RC and D. That's not one, I don't really know what those acronyms are. I looked it up, but if you could, if you could elaborate a little bit on that project, that would be great.
Yeah, so that one is Y East RC and D is an entity that works with farmers, mostly in small businesses to help support sort of energy efficiency and sort of technology adoption for production. And Commissioner Kramer can probably explain that one better than I.
But Madam Chair, if I may, I sit on the Y East RC and D Board and have for the last nine years. We work, as she said, mostly with, with the farming and ranching community for we started out with irrigation, conservation, and we've moved up to the electric farming equipment. And our director, Mr. Robert Wallace, is on the call today. So if I may indulge to put Mr. Wallace on the spot to answer your question. Thank you.
That'd be great. Hi.
Well, hey, good morning. I was hoping that Commissioner Kramer and Ms. Carrie would take care of this for me, but yeah, so hey, I'm Robert Wallace, I live in Duffer. I've been with Y East for about twelve years now. And so we, long story short, work with a lot of different types of contracts towards energy efficiency and renewable energy, really on a, on a statewide basis. Our office is actually located down with the Soil Water Conservation District on the port of the Dals. And so this to answer your question on the, the dry hub, the Duffer Rural Innovation Hub, it's a, it's, we're working with other nonprofits to test out electric equipment. And it's kind of a, more of a rural electrification project. We're working with Forth, which is the really big in the electric vehicle market, electric transportation, everything from scooters to semis. We're working with Bonneville Environmental Foundation and Sustainable Northwest and Y East are the four partners in this. And so we've started by bringing in some electric farm equipment. We've currently got two electric tractors on the ground. We've got actually two more supposed to be here probably within the week. And plans to purchase maybe upwards of about twelve to fourteen more pieces of equipment over the next year. And so these will, these will come in to Duffer. We'll field test them here. We're working with some of the local landowners. We'll fit them with remote data sensor kits and then we'll deploy these out to farms across the state of Oregon to allow them to test them on their farm and do side by side comparisons with a traditional diesel tractor. And so we're really we're kind of acting as a third party. We want to see if it works, how it works, where it works, where it doesn't work. And it'll, it's starting with tractors because that's what's on the market right now, but it'll also include other types of small construction equipment. And then I think to date, we've got funding for three different electric pickup trucks. And so that's something that we can all use in the rural area. And so a lot of this equipment's going to come in to do for, as a central hub. And then a lot of people will be coming here to see it and be a part of our, our team and our other nonprofit partners will be coming in here too. And so it's, it's, it's moving and there'll be more announcements on funding probably within the next month of what we've obtained as a team for this project.
Thank you. And I really appreciate that explanation, Robert. And aren't you kind of famous on the cover, weren't you on the cover of Rural Light or something recently?
Yeah, yeah. My daughter, my daughter says, Dad, you're on, you're on the cover of a magazine. I don't think to her it mattered whether it was the Rural Light or People or Forbes. It was just I was on the cover of a magazine. So yeah. We, this particular project, there's a lot of exciting things that's going to happen. And we're naturally going to be a hub because we're going to be, we're, my role in the project is kind of the guy on the ground to bring the equipment in. And so we'll naturally have a lot of this stuff coming through here. So, yeah. And we, I was just going to maybe follow up just by saying too, if I may, we had recently brought in one of the hybrid F-150 pickups. Vokes waiting in all electric car and the tractor. We worked with Wasco Electric Cooperative, met down at their warehouse off, on the west end of town there. And included Northern Wasco PUD and some other electric co-ops to come in and just get a first look at this equipment because we want them to be aware of what we're doing too, because we're, they're getting a lot of questions through their utility partners of what, what we're doing here locally too. So it's, utilities are very involved in this also.
That's great. Thank you so much for the work you're doing. It's very interesting and exciting and timely as, you know, communities look to be more resilient around needing, you know, less carbon emissions and, and things like that. So right here in Duffer, I love it. Thank you. So the other comment I would have is, I was fortunate to be able to attend the meeting with the Wasco County EDC when they, when they did the priorities. And so I really appreciate the work that, that group does. They're very thoughtful. And so the, the projects, as Commissioner Kramer mentioned, on the, on the pipeline and moving the workforce housing project, is there a project around workforce housing or what, what would we move? I'm not real clear on that. Or is that just a general priority is what I see is housing is a general priority rather than a project, right?
Yeah, if that's a question for me, Madam Chair, yes, it's you know, it goes hand in hand with everything we've been talking about today. So it's it's something that needs to be elevated. Maybe it doesn't go to the list, but you know, I, I think that we need to just elevate those conversations. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. And I, I do think that the priority issues, you nailed them, really. That's really what we're hearing, you know, a lot about as, in relationship to economic development are those, are those issues? So thank you very much. So that's all the comments I have, except we did get a comment in the chat from Ms. Farrar. Really thanking Mr. Wallace for his work. And I'm sure that Ms. Farrar, with her interest in community resiliency, will be probably checking in with Mr. Wallace about the work that he's doing. So excellent connection today. Thank you. All right. Do you need anything from us, Carrie? Or do we have, do we need to approve this officially or just a nod or?
I think the request is for acknowledgement and I would defer to Kathy on what exactly that means.
Historically, there hasn't been a motion, just consensus to approve as presented unless you have a change. And I think that Commissioner or Vice Chair Kramer has suggested that they look at that one project, the Dog River Project, to see if it's been funded. And if it has, the suggestion would be to move the workforce housing project up onto the list. So if you're going to be in consensus, you'll need to include that in what you're in consensus on, if you wish.
So thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Clark, for that. What I would suggest is that if, if the Dog River has adequate funding and can be removed from the list, I would like to send that tenth spot back to the EDC to make that recommendation as to what we move forward. Thank you.
So the. Fine with that. I mean, from a consensus standpoint, I'm fine with that.
The EDC won't meet again until March. And we need to get the, is it, are you comfortable with sending the list as it's to McKed for the regional prioritization? Okay.
Yeah, it looks like we're all in acknowledgement consensus to go ahead and move the list forward as stated. Yeah, so hopefully that Dog River Pipeline could be taken off the list in March or by then. So thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Great work, Carrie. Anything else, commissioners? Okay.
On that one.
Okay. All right. And, oh, we're right on time. Excellent. It looks like the next presentation is the Coordinated Transit System.
And Carrie has a two-part presentation. EDC prioritization and the second part is her quarterly report.
I'm so sorry, Carrie, to short you in your presentation. And, and I don't want to give you any stress that we have to stay exactly on time. So just go for it, okay? Sorry about that.
Thank you, Carrie. Well, I can, I can do some quick highlights to try to keep you on time. And if there's anything else you want me to dive into more, feel free to to ask a question or bring it up at the, at the end. So I'll just run through, like I said, quick highlights. We're continuing to work with some of those smaller water and wastewater systems around the county to help support them and addressing some challenges they have. It's a long, slow process, but making some progress with a couple of them. With our smaller cities, we've continued to communicate with Duffer about next steps for their wastewater system and then exploring what's coming next for their water system as they get that project up off the ground for the wastewater side. And Mopin, we've been working with the city this fall to do some planning for their next community visioning effort. They've kind of reached the end of their planning horizon for their previous one. And so would like to do some updates to that. And I think they're sort of putting that process on pause until the conditions with COVID are a little bit more amenable to getting folks together in person with comfort from, from the community there to make sure they're getting good engagement. But I think that's going to be a really good opportunity for them to take a look at what their long-term priorities are coming up. Also, for some of these smaller communities and systems is the focus. And we were able to host an infrastructure planning and finance workshop down in Mopin in the, in November with some support from Rural Community Assistance Corporation, who does provide really specific technical assistance for water and wastewater systems. We're able to provide that half-day training and have some of our funders, our usual suspect funder in the room for that, as well as participating virtually for those who couldn't travel. But a good chance for our systems to kind of get a refresher on what those processes look like and get connected with some of those funding agencies. On the broadband front, that's been a busy one. We've been working closely with Q Life as a follow-up to their strategic planning process. Look at developing a broadband action team with the EDC's broadband committee. And we have our first meeting scheduled for next week and excited to kind of kick that process off. It's an opportunity to get a little bit more input from across the county on what current conditions are and priorities are around broadband access and utilization as well. I think that effort will probably start with, we're proposing anyways, is a sort of a current conditions look, so looking at some speed testing and surveying to get a better sense of where we are, given the challenges with the existing federal data. Not particularly helpful for our ability to articulate that as well as access funding. So I think a good chance for us to kind of look at that data and determine where some of those gaps that anecdotally we know where they are, but having that data to back it up is going to be really important as we move forward, I think. And then continuing to work with Q Life and their planning and sort of funding applications for expanded service. I'm open for business committee fronts. I, I think the, a couple of pieces to highlight here, just, we've been working with the, the partners on the Brownfield Coalition Assessment Grant Program, the City of the DOWS, the Port of the DOWS and the EDC on the county's behalf as a partner in that coalition and have had, I think, picked up very quickly there. We've got seven applications in, in, in process and moving forward. And about half of that funding is committed to those applications, we anticipate, based on the scope of work for them. But it's been a really good chance, I think, for the partners in that room to connect with some of our local property owners about needs. It's been, outreach has mostly been focused in the DOWS to date since the city is the lead applicant for that. But now that we've had a chance to kind of hit the ground in the DOWS, they're planning on doing a push for outreach in other areas of the county since the county's geography is the largest and defines the eligibility for those resources. So looking at phase one and phase two environmental assessments, underground storage tank and hazardous building material type projects, as well as some opportunity for redevelopment planning. So I think a good suite of tools that our communities are able to use. And if you all are out and about and find projects that might be a good fit for that, please don't hesitate to get in touch. And we can do some outreach to those folks. The other one here, over over the last six or eight months, we've been working with the Port of the DOWS and the Community College with some engagement from Business Oregon and Regional Solutions as well to move through a planning process with the Center on Rural Innovation, looking at our focus on entrepreneurship and through the digital economy and thinking about technology and, and how it's incorporated into both our existing industries and new opportunities for economic development here in Wasco County. And that's, that's something that I think the partners are really excited about, those opportunities to really connect with both existing and new businesses for additional supports and thinking about that a little bit more broadly. And we were able to, with that sort of grounding, apply for some funding from the Rural Opportunity Initiative to do some mapping of our entrepreneurial ecosystem, some more targeted outreach to some of our small business owners to kind of hear from them what their challenges and opportunities are with accessing services and growing their businesses. And then look at developing some programming to help support that. I'm so really excited to be sort of kicking off that next phase of work. So additional fact-finding, but also moving into implementation of some lovely group there and excited to keep you all posted as we move through that process. And then the last one I'll just highlight is that the, the EDC is working through an update of its strategic action plan. We've been utilizing time in each of our meetings this year to do that. And are anticipating having an updated plan draft for the Economic Development Commission in March. And look forward to sharing that with you all as well for additional input. I will stop there, given the time.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, commissioners? No?
Thanks, Carrie.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. And just a, just a comment. When Carrie was talking about the Open for Business Committee, just something we're related to, since I sit on the Urban Renewal Board, the Brownfield Assessment, Environmental Assessment Resource is being utilized on that Tony's Building. Right now, you've probably seen that it is going to be taken down, but first we're taking advantage of this grant to get that assessment done. And it's just taking a little more time. But it is a great resource and to the Urban Renewal Board for sure. So just wanted to let my colleagues know about that. So, great. All right. Thank you very much, Carrie. Always nice to see you. Lots of work, my goodness. So keep going. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're going to move on to our Coordinated Transit System. Kate Drennan, thank you for that PowerPoint in our packet. That was very informative.
Yeah, thanks. We'll shift over to the other side of the McCad House on the transportation. I am going to share my screen. And this packet should be similar to what you have in your packet, but might be slightly different, a new slider. So, so I'm here to talk about the 2022 Gorge Pass, which is an effort across all the different transit providers in the gorge, which is why we're calling it a coordinated system. This new system that you can see on this map includes all of the gorge providers. So here in green, that's Steamedia County, and then over to Mount Adams Transportation Services on the Washington side. Here, the link in the DOWS with our routes here in the DOWS and over to Hood River and then Columbia Area Transit throughout Hood River and then all the way to Portland. So this new kind of Gorge Pass system can take you all around the gorge, but also all the way to Portland, as well as Vancouver. The pass will also work on various seasonal shuttles, like the Mount Hood Shuttle that goes up to Meadows Teacup and Government Camp. That's going to kick off on the 8th. And this spring, there's a shuttle to Dog Mountain. So we're really excited about the transit pass because it gets you kind of all the places you need to go, but there are a lot of recreational opportunities. Another advantage of this pass is when you go to Multnomah Falls, as well as Dog Mountain, you don't need to bother with getting the permits that you do typically if you're arriving by vehicle. So a little bit more about this pass. So this coordinates the four transit providers. Like I said, it's for the first time. In addition to the passes being you, being able to be used on all of our fixed routes, we also have one beautiful website that's coordinated, one kind of one-stop shop you can go to for information on all the different timetables, maps. We have, you know, one number that you can call for information. We have kind of the same materials, brochures across all the providers, just to try to make it a little bit easier for people to navigate and feel like it's one system across the gorge. So how does the pass work? It's more than just a pass. It is $40 for adults for the year for unlimited rides on that, on those fixed routes and $20 for youth. Like I said, it gets you around the gorge to Portland, Vancouver, up to Mount Hood and beyond. But there are some other really neat parts of the program that we're excited about that are also part of the pass, including an outdoor equity fund that I'll tell you about here in a minute, and these offers and trip ideas. So the, the idea behind the trip ideas is that, you know, we want to give people, particularly those visiting the gorge, ideas of things they can do beyond Multnomah Falls. We, we want to try to spread our visitors out across the gorge. We also want to help them visit all the cities throughout the gorge to kind of spread those tourism dollars. So each month, we have a newsletter that will tell you different ideas of places you can go, events you can go to in the different towns, kind of step-by-step instructions on, on how to do it. Maybe you get on at this time in Portland, you go do this hike, it takes about an hour and a half, then you go to this spot for lunch, then you get back on. So really making it super easy to navigate and spreading all the great opportunities in the gorge for folks. And as part of that, you know, each month in our newsletter, we highlight a different town in the gorge and different local businesses. And so this is both a way to, like I said, spread those tourism dollars around, kind of help with economic recovery. This screen is from the Cascade Locks highlighting, and there is a video that went along with it that highlighted these. We've been partnering with businesses to offer deals. So if a participating business wants to, they'll do like a month-long special that if you show your Gorge Pass card, maybe you get, you know, half off your pint of beer, or you get a bottle and get one, you know, ice cream cone or something like that. So it's kind of a neat opportunity to partner with our businesses and get the word out of all the great places that people can go. So a little bit more about the Equity Fund, which is something that we're super excited about. You know, we know that the gorge is known for our trails, our public lands, and that they're open to all and they're good for our health. You know, research has shown that getting outside makes you physically healthier, mentally happier. We know that there've been just so many issues, you know, with COVID, mental stress, people are seeking the outdoors. And so we wanted this gorge pass to be a way to get people to the outdoors on transit, out of their cars, but also to open up outdoors to maybe organizations that are helping people that are traditionally not, either had access to the outdoors or not felt welcome. So the Equity Fund is really focused on kind of three different pieces of equity. And the first one is supporting those organizations actively kind of make the outdoors accessible and welcome to all. And those are some of those that, geodiversity and culture seed. The second piece of equity is supporting organizations who really carry the responsibility of search and rescue in our region. We know that when we bring a lot of visitors out here, it has an impact. And a lot of our search and rescue has kind of bared the burden, the brunt of those efforts without funding. So part of our Equity Fund donates directly to search and rescue efforts. And then the third piece of equity is making sure that we carve out passes for low-income programs. We already have a Transit Connect program that the link and, and CAT operate to give free passes to low-income folks. And so this Gorge Pass is going to help, help fund those low-income passes, kind of in continuity past the existing grant program. So how are we kind of paying for that, this Equity Fund piece? So there's two different ways. One, a dollar from each of purchased pass, both the adult and youth, go into that fund. And then the second one is, you know, we're really trying to focus on employer sales as well, getting employers to, to purchase these passes for employees to use as a commute option. And so for every pass that an employer purchases, we have a buy one, give one. So one pass is donated to the Equity Fund to go to the, that low-income pass program or the outdoor equity fund program. We are hoping that that will be a nice incentive for businesses. We've offered the same kind of buy one, give one deal to different organizations around the gorge that we've presented to, such as rotaries, chambers of commerce, all of those. So if they're able to do sales through their organizations, they're also getting that buy one, give one offer as well. And then, of course, there's, you know, monetary donations to our, to our fund, which is a 501(c)(3) that we set up. You know, our tax deductible. So we're also letting businesses know that if they don't want to buy passes, they can, you know, donate money to that fund and, and write that off. And we really think that, you know, this Gorge Pass really fits kind of these three little fun emblems that the Gorge Pass fits in with our kind of our sustainability efforts, you know, that, that we care about in the gorge and the businesses care about because we're taking vehicles off the road and alleviating congestion. You know, it supports kind of health efforts and getting people physically and mentally healthy. And that, those DEI initiatives, a lot of companies are really focused on by putting these transit passes in the hands of underserved communities. So this screen shows you some of our partners in this, in this effort. And we have that newsletter that goes out both to our writers and to our growing list of partners who support the program. And you know, when you're a partner, that means that you're helping us, you know, spread the word about this pass, helping share information about our trip ideas, selling passes. We do have a widget that we can put on any website that can help sell the pass through your website. And actually, you know, some of these organizations, like we, we have in-person sales at REI in Portland. And, you know, any partner keeps a, keeps a 10% commission on any sale. So these partners are both getting an advantage of getting a little bit of commission when they sell the pass, but are also helping us have a broader reach. So we're really kind of at the start of this journey, but we're helping, trying to, to spread the word and, and knowing that the more passes we can sell, you know, the better it will be for the gorge. You know, we think these passes are really great for those who, who get them. You know, they get to avoid parking hassles. There's a great connection to the Portland Airport, kind of all those good things. But for us, we're really focused on what it does for the gorge as well. You know, we're hoping that we can, we can help sell passes for folks that maybe only ride transit occasionally, but recognize that it reduces congestion, it, it connects, you know, healthcare jobs, it gets tourists to leave their cars at home. And really, the more that we can get people using transit throughout the gorge, the better it will be for all of us. And by selling passes, hopefully we can have a robust service in the system and, you know, increase our, our service on our existing lines and, and all of that. So hoping this kind of lays the foundation for more transit investment in the future. So ways that you can support us. You know, like I said, we're, we're hoping that folks will, will buy a pass, which they can do on our website, a gorgepass.com. You can also buy it through any of the four transit providers. And all of us have our own websites. It's available at the link. And then you can also buy a physical pass, so you can buy that e-pass on your phone and kind of show it. Or you can, you know, buy the pass to have in your, your wallet and, you know, flash it to the driver. And those physical passes are sold at all of the provider offices throughout the gorge. Like I said, spreading the word, you know, we're trying to let folks know about this initiative, make presentations to anyone that will listen. So if there's anyone that you think that I should be presenting to or that would be interested in this, let me know. And I'm happy to, to, to do this presentation. And having an organization become partners is great. It helps to just spread the word and, and increase our reach. Selling passes on, on folks' website, that's not so much for the county commission, but, you know, other kind of chambers and rotaries and lines and all those civic organizations that we're hoping to work. chambers and rotaries and lines and all those civic organizations that we're hoping to work with, you know, having them put a little widget that you can buy a pass would be great. And then of course, getting folks to donate to the Gorge Equity Fund is also really valuable. So that was my quick hit. Tried to keep it, keep it short since we're a little past time, but if there are any questions about the, the pass, I'm happy to take them. We're just, we're just super excited about this kind of next step in coordination across the gorge with all the providers and, and hopefully making something really, you know, attractive and convenient and valuable for, for both everyone that lives here and, and it takes transit in the gorge, but also you know, folks that are coming to the gorge and giving them other options besides driving. So that I will pause. If there are any questions?
Okay. I can't see commissioners yet, but are there, do you have any questions or comments for Kate? Thank you, Kate.
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brennan, for that. I appreciate it. You're doing a great job and I'm really glad you're part of the team. I've got a couple of other ideas I'd like to visit with you offline with, and so we'll do that later, but your presentation gets better and better each time. Thank you very much.
I know you've seen it a few times now, so I appreciate it.
How about you, Commissioner Hagy?
I've only seen it once and it was great. Quickly before I, so I was just looking, I like the idea of the trip ideas. I think that's interesting. They try and encourage people like how you can actually use it to get destinations. I went, I, I went to the Trip Ideas page and then I clicked on to the gorge and that's a dead link for some reason. Just as a note, so you know, you can actually get there a different way, but that one's kind of dead. The question I had was, have you seen any like increase in ridership since you guys rolled this, this thing out? I know it's very young and new, but how is that going? And have you seen any indication that folks are starting to use this more and more?
Yeah, I mean, we've seen an increase in people using, like boarding with the pass. I think that those are probably a lot of people that were already riding. And our big push in the kind of Portland metro market is going to be more focused on spring when we see more of that tourism kind of coming into the gorge and doing the hikes. And so we do have a marketing budget grant through ODOT. So we've been kind of marketing locally in the gorge to try to get those people that are open to transit already take it. But we're kind of saving our firepower in the Portland, the larger Portland market until spring. So I would say ridership, I don't know that it's entirely impacted, like adding new riders, because I think the people that we've seen using the pass are, are more in that kind of existing riders. And this is just kind of making it easier and inexpensive and convenient for them, which is, which is a valuable thing as well as long, you know, because once they have it, it's unlimited rides. So maybe before they would ride sometimes, but you know, when they're kind of, oh, do I want to pay the fare? I don't want to just drive today. And it's like, oh, well, it's free at this point, you know, sunk cost. So hopefully we're getting some more trips out of that. But I think, you know, that kind of new ridership, we'll see, we hope to see more in the spring when we start pressing, you know, to the larger markets.
Scott, we can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
A little bit better.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I was going to say, whatever you've done, I think you've gotten the word out pretty good because I've seen it in a number of places, you know, socially otherwise. And it's, so it's pretty, I think the word is definitely getting out. One other question I had was on the, the app. Is there any other functionality in the app itself? Like can, or is it just kind of have the card?
Yeah, it's really just a ticketing app currently. So it is, yeah, I mean, there's a functionality for us in terms of knowing where sales are purchased and for partners, organizations, and like if it's through a rotary, if it's through REI, all of that, we can help with that kind of commission piece. Like that, that, you know, the backend of the app does that. But once a rider has it, it's really just like an e-ticket that they won't lose, you know, unless they lose their phone. And actually, and it's replaceable if you lose your phone, because it's tied to your phone number, we can, we can replace that. But really it's just like, you know, it's not, not something that you'll misplace. But that's really the only functionality that we are hoping that the, the gorgepass.com and with the TransLink Alliance, which is kind of the coordination of all of the transit providers, that that's going to do that other information that ideally would be done through an app, but this is just isn't that sophisticated. So, yeah.
We can't hear you again, Scott.
Do I just say, talk louder?
That's better.
When you lean closer, it's
Oh, sorry. I don't know what's going on. I was going to say
Closer.
It'd be nice for the map to be on, on the app or something. The one thing that I was interested in is where does it go? Yeah, where can I pick it up? That's like the most important thing because then if it goes to those places that I'm going, it's obviously very helpful. So anyway, just comment. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Kate. You know, I just wanted to comment about ridership right now. You know, hopefully if we ever get out of this COVID, we will see ridership improve because it, people might still be hesitant to, to get on a bus if they can take their car, even if they might prefer the bus, but not at a time when you're having to sit next to strangers and wear a mask. And so it's a, it's a rough time to roll something out and actually, you know, get accurate, you know, data, I think. And then the other thing I wanted to, so when I saw the map, there was like a black line, like a route to Mount Hood. Can you actually ride it to the ski resort?
Yeah. So there's a shuttle that operates between Hood River and will go up to Meadows and Teacup, and then actually all the way to Government Camp. And so that's a a seasonal shuttle that CAT runs it, and it will be starting on the 8th of this month. And so yes, you can, you can ride it up there.
Okay. And if you're coming from the DOWS, where would you, where would you pick up that bus?
So from the DOWS, we, we have a, a bus between the Dallas Transit Center and CAT Transit Center four times a day, and it's a dollar to ride or your pass will cover it. And then so you would ride to the, the CAT Transit Center and then transfer there and pick up the bus up to the mountain.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And well, that's a, that would seem to me to be an excellent resource. I've got mountains getting pretty crowded. So
Yeah, and you can bring your skis or snowboard, all of that with you. So it's, it, yeah, I'm, we're hoping we have different promotions. We have, you know, marketing videos that we release every month. One of them was, you know, how to get to the airport and back. And so our next focus are going to be kind of on winter driving and how, hey, leave it to the professionals. And then the Mount Hood Meadows Shuttle, I think we'll be, we'll be doing a video of exactly like how to get there, you know, where to board, how to get on, what to do with your stuff in the February newsletter, since we're recording it right now. It's not running yet. Yeah.
Maybe Scott will, will write it up and tell us how it went. Just one more thing. Do we, are, is this something we've looked at as, as a county organization to partner up or join up? Is Tyler still with us? Maybe he left.
I think he went back to vacationing.
Oh, good for him.
Yeah. So I, I don't believe so. This was a separate ODOT grant that, that McCad pursued independent of kind of the Wasco County Stiff that you guys help, that we, we partner with you on. So, you know, Tyler's aware, we, you know, we have our Public Transit Advisory Committee, which is part of kind of the Wasco County. And so they've been plugged into this effort for sure, but I think this is probably the first time that we've come to the commission with this information.
Great. Thank you. Really appreciate the work you're doing. Anything else, commissioners? Okay. Thanks, Kate.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Okay. Next thing is our wildfire smoke response. And hi Lauren. She's just popping up. Let it, yeah, and tell us what's going on with extension and wildfires prevention, smoke prevention.
Thank you. Thanks so much for the time today. I'm going to apologize. I picked up a cold for my seven year olds. I don't sound as great as I might normally. But I am here to provide some updates on extensions collaborative work with other county agencies and local organizations to help address smoke, particularly with our most vulnerable groups in the region. As you know, our continuing issues with smoke, particularly wildfire smoke in the summer is a big problem and has significant health impacts. We continue to have hotter, drier summers. And in fact, the fire season has increased by 80 days over the last several years. I also just want to paint a quick picture. You know very well that Wasco County has faced evacuations of various community members for much of the last decade for one region or another. And the particular health impacts for smoke are really dangerous for vulnerable groups because of the ability of that PM 2.5 from smoke to travel deep into the lungs. It can also bring other toxic compounds with it. So with kind of that context and background, we have been working with a number of different community partners to have a three pronged collaborative approach to this. So I kind of look at it as one, we need more information on the smoke itself. So currently the situation and the context for the gorge is that we are considered a smoke sensor receptor area by the Department of Environmental Quality. So what that means is we face smoke impacts almost year round. And you can kind of picture that. This time of year, we get wood burning smoke from people's home fires and other things in the spring. We can have the smudge pots from orchards and then orchard waste burning. In the summer, we get wildfire smoke from across the region in the Intermountain West. And then in the fall, we can have some prescribed burns from various forests and other woodlands. So that makes our region particularly vulnerable to smoke and its health impacts. And so what we needed to do was increase our ability to monitor the smoke. And the Labor Day fires of 2020 really showed us that at points. As you probably all recall, we had some of the worst air quality numbers on the globe, which was definitely scary. And some of our community members continued to have to work through that or be outdoors in that. And one of the things that I kind of honed in on through my public health lens was the fact that we only have two DEQ monitors in our whole region. So one is at West Side Fire in River and the other is at St. Mary's in the DOWS. So the fact that orchardists in Parkdale or a school in Cascade Locks or a group of folks on the west side of the DOWS or in Mopin or Doofur are trying to make calls on whether their workers can be outdoors or whether kids can be at recess based on those two monitors seemed inadequate. So part of this three pronged approach is we want to increase our ability to monitor. So great news on that. We applied for and received a $10,000 grant from Oregon Health Sciences University, the Knight Cancer Foundation to purchase 10 more monitors that will be installed across the gorge and Hood River in Wasco County. So our hope is to work with partners where we can place those monitors at sites where vulnerable populations exist. We're hoping to look at possible partnerships with schools or orchardists where farm workers may live and work. So that's step one. We're really excited about the ability to continue to have better monitoring of the smoke levels in the region. So people can make more informed decisions. And then number two is communication about those smoke levels. So a couple of weeks ago, you all graciously signed a letter of support for a grant that we submitted to DEQ to develop community response plans. And I'm pleased to say we received that funding. So that's another $80,000 that will go through Wasco County with your, with your vote and your blessing to conduct that work. That's something that I'll help lead along with a number of other community partners. And the goal really with that is to have a broad focus with community partners to collaboratively address how we communicate about smoke. Whether that's the prescribed burns, just alerting people that it's going to be happening, maybe to private homeowners to say today's not such a great day to burn. We've got the inversion or, you know, whatever it might be. Communicating with schools about recess and whatnot. So that whole activity will culminate in the development of a regional plan that will address how we communicate about smoke. But our other goal there is to have a tabletop exercise that is attended by our local partners, emergency management, extension and CBOs to help make sure that we are communicating in the best way possible and that people are getting that critical health information in the ways that they need. And then the final one, which unfortunately I don't have a report on whether that's been funded yet or not, is we applied for another DEQ grant to actually mitigate and reduce smoke impacts. So some of our local partners with extension and soil and water conservation and the forest collaboratives have applied for a grant to improve our ability to chip and masticate, and this gets out of my wheelhouse, but to essentially prevent the amount of smoke going into the atmosphere. So I feel like that really holistic collaborative effort to look at smoke at a systems level, one, monitoring, two, communication, and three, actually mitigating and preventing it will really transform the way that the gorge handles smoke. And that's something I'm really excited about. And so our next steps here with me presenting to you basically is to say, can you please accept that funding from DEQ so we can get started on that community response plan development? And then we'll be working with partners across the region to determine the best placement of those 10 new smoke monitors. So those, those are the kind of big key messages I have. And then we'll continue to work on ways to actually reduce and mitigate smoke in our region. Any questions?
This, wow. A lot of great information. Commissioners?
Well, he's going to, he's going to sit me out, isn't he? All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Very good presentation, Ms. Kramer. Appreciate that. That gave me some extra ammunition for our next topic that we're going to be discussing this afternoon and, or today. And this ties right into, to wildfire and, and, and forest health and, and all of those pieces. So appreciate your, your input today and your enthusiasm for, for keeping this thing alive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hagy?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Lauren. Appreciate you being here. I, quick, quick question I had. So I was just looking at some mapping systems online that show locations of air quality monitoring, but smoke monitoring is a little different. Is, is, I'm assuming that that information is available and out there, people can go see what the, how, how does, how does one find that information?
Yeah, great question. So if you do go to a website like Purple Air, for example, you'll see that in addition to the two DEQ monitors that I mentioned, some private individuals or businesses can also purchase Purple Air monitors that have a data system that's similar, but not exactly like the DEQ monitors. So they're able to kind of speak the same language and we'll be working with a firm called E-Space Labs out of Bend that's developed a similar kind of smoke sensor receptor area for Jefferson and Deschutes Counties to install a whole lot of monitors in that region to help better monitor and understand smoke impacts there. So we'll be developing our own website that ties into that and can help translate the information that comes from our new local monitors. So that if you are looking on your iPhone, for example, or pulling up the website, you'll be able to get a whole collection of data from those monitors. In conversations with emergency management and the sheriff's offices, we've also learned that there's some new technology around texting for emergency alerts. So my dream is that someday those smoke sensors could communicate with emergency management through text and it would just automatically trigger a message sent to you on your iPhone at some point that would say, hey, if you're in this region or catchment area, the smoke levels are now at a hazardous amount, please go indoors. And it would be paired with helpful health protection strategies, either wear a mask, go indoors, reduce your impact, which would be really helpful for those vulnerable groups, whether that's older adults, farm workers, children, et cetera. So that is to come and we'll be able to access that data once those monitors are in place and kind of networked with the bigger system.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Wow. Just really, really thank you for, you know, this incredible partnership with OSU Extension that we have with all the various and diverse resources and programs you bring to our community is, is really phenomenal. And this is yet another example of, you know, excellent help that you're bringing to our community and the way of monitoring mitigation and prevention. So this is our new world, I guess, and what we're dealing with. And we really appreciate you getting on it. And I, I suspect you'll be bringing us some grants in the future to approve or?
Yeah, I'm not sure. So that's an area that's new to me, since I'm presenting to you maybe for only the second time in my work, but we have received the grant funds. I was told in our letter to them, in order to move forward, we just need to have the DUNES number and the tax ID number. So I'm not sure if you So I'm not sure if you need to see everything in front of you in a packet. Maybe that's a Kathy question for offline, but.
I'll work with Lauren offline and we'll figure it out.
Thank you so much. That's excellent. Okay.
So at this point, we are appreciative and we'll look forward to if we have to formally adopt or approve any documents and sign. Okay?
Excellent. Thanks so much for the time this morning.
All right. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you very much for the work you put in. Oh, Commissioner Kramer?
I'm waving goodbye. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
You were raising your hand. Oh, the joy of Zoom meetings, you know, and okay, great. All right. So now we're going to move on to our next topic, which is recreation enhancement wildfire response and conservation concept comments. I'll just introduce the subject a little bit for our audience. This is the second time we're actually looking at an iteration of some comments to a legislative, kind of a very broad legislative concept that is being proposed by Congressman Blumenauer. So I'm going to let Kelly take it from here. She has submitted for the second time a comment letter for us, of which I'm very appreciative of you taking the time to, once again, draft something for us. So go for it, Kelly.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Kelly Housley Glover, Planning Director for Wasco County. As you mentioned, this is the second time you'll be reviewing this letter. It's a comment function. It gets submitted via their website. And so that's why it's a little bit informal in the presentation. But basically, the legislative concept, which it looks like Kathy's attached to the packet, covers a lot of areas. It's the Mount Hood National Forest, portions of the scenic area, and has pretty broad sweeping impacts on residents of Wasco County. So we thought it was important to submit some comments and feedback to Congressman Blumenauer and Senator Wyden, just so that they have some concepts of how this will impact residents locally. And I worked with some partners and other folks to get their input on this document, including from Sheriff Lane McGill, as far as what the impacts would be to emergency services, specifically the sheriff's office. So this letter for you today lays out some of the, I think, the most critical issues that we really want some consideration from, specifically what the impacts are of creating new wilderness spaces or dedicated public spaces are from a staffing resource perspective, but also impacts to our budget. There are some portions of this concept that really do focus on allocating more funding for emergency services like Sheriff's Search and Rescue and ambulance, which I think is really wonderful and well needed, we all know, in the gorge. So we wanted to praise that, but also encourage them to work directly with our emergency service providers. Wildfire risk is something that I hear, if not on a daily basis, definitely on a weekly basis for our residents, is a huge concern. It's been, when I went around the county for years, talking to folks wherever I was, number one concern of our citizens was wildfire risks. So we've emphasized how it's really important that this, any plan to expand wilderness areas or to do anything different with wilderness areas really needs to take that wildfire lens, particularly to mitigate any wildfire risk to our residents. And then think about the firefighting component. There's some talk in the legislative concept about wildfire risk. And another thing that I didn't see present, but is something that we're intimately aware of in Wasco County is drought resiliency. And drought resiliency and wildfire kind of goes hand in hand. We know if we've had, like last year, we had a really dry season. Our fire season got bumped up, I think, the earliest that it'd been since 1940. So those two things definitely go on hand in hand. And we want to make sure there's consideration of that. There, with the scenic area, there is some language related to potentially expanding to make a continuous loop through the national scenic area. And that does have a direct impact on our foresters and agricultural producers. So we want to make sure that those folks are included in the conversation. And potentially, there's some solutions outside of just designating those as completely public lands. And then finally, particularly in the scenic area, but also in areas around the Mount Hood National Forest, those lands intersect with either reservation land or tribal treaty land. And it would be really beneficial, out of respect for our tribal partners, for us to have some kind of intermediary appointed, either at the state or federal level, that can work on a government to government basis with our tribal treaty partners. So that's sort of a broad brush summary of the document I prepared. I'm happy to answer any questions or address any concerns from the commission at this time. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to be looking probably for consensus on this letter. So how about, it looks like Commissioner Kramer is unmuted, so I'm going to open it up. I'm assuming you have some comments, Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Housley Glover and I visited briefly yesterday about this letter as well. My concern with, not a big concern, but I want to reword that last paragraph on the first page. Basically, the last sentence, it says, "We would ask consideration for revision to firefighting policies, et cetera, et cetera." I would like to turn that around and ask for consideration for revision of the U.S. Forest Service and USDA Forest Management Plan. My understanding is that we're living with a 1990s and a 1994 document. And those plans, I think, are a wee bit outdated for what we're living with today. And because at a point in time, we'll have to aggressively fight a fire. But if we follow management and reduce our hazardous fuels, then we can use fire as a tool to produce our healthy forests and get us back on track. So I don't have specific language, but I think Kelly gets the gist of this. And I think you might agree with that. I think that, but otherwise, this is spot on. I've had lengthy conversations with Ms. Brumfield and Mr. Egler from Mr. Blumenauer's office and Senator Wyden's office. And I am totally okay with a concept, but loading the concept up, as Kelly suggested, is irresponsible. And this has been a regurgitated move from a few years back. And putting all of this stuff in, in the middle of reducing the capacity of our forest service, just is not a good starter for me. And I've been, both staffers told me that we would love to continue the conversation after the comment period is over, so that we can move forward with the positive aspects of some of this and reduce some of the other negative effects. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Commissioner Hagie?
Yeah, I would generally just agree with Steve, what he said. I have no problem with the changes suggested. The one thing that I highlighted here was just this idea of, this is actually in the third paragraph, we've encouraged the concept to be revised to address targeted areas at one target area at a time. And I think that's really the key thing that kind of has struck me, is it's so broad and so widespread. It's kind of hard to get really just even effectively comment on any, you know, the whole thing because it's just so big. I remember the first thing, when I saw this, I looked at the map, which kind of has all these colors and it shows where all the affected areas are. And it's just, it's pretty overwhelming. So, but generally speaking, I support the idea and I appreciate Kelly putting this together for us.
Yeah, thank you. I totally agree. That was something I flagged as probably the most important sentence in the entire letter. So thank you for pointing that out. And I did also talk to Liv from Congressman Blumenauer's office and really tried to emphasize the importance of looking at these areas specifically because they are different. Our part of the national forest use is very different from Hood Rivers, for instance. And to some extent, even maybe some of the scenic area that's on the western part of our area. So hopefully she heard, but I don't know. One thing that kind of struck me, and maybe you guys can help me with this, but this seems really weird. It's like a legislative concept. Is this common that we're asked to comment on a really big, broad thing like this? It's not a bill. So it seems odd to me. And I don't know, have you seen this before or?
I have not. I've not seen something like this approaching in this way. Usually what happens is, what I've seen more often is a bill gets put together and then we comment on a bill. But I mean, it's nice that they're kind of rolling out a concept. I think that's a good thing. But I think it's just a bit too broad for kind of this whole thing.
Yeah, okay. And I do want to appreciate what Commissioner Kramer said. I agree with the change in the language that you proposed. And also, just, I don't think we need additional language in it, but I did appreciate your comment about, you know, some of this can be very beneficial to our citizens. And we didn't really put that in the letter, but I think that's a no brainer. And I don't, I don't think we need to revise the letter on that. Let's see. I got a few more comments. I think probably my biggest concern, and you guys can help me with this as well, is, you know, these bills get passed, but they're not always funded, right? I mean, did we not see this with the scenic area? Where we were promised all this money and for the 25 years we've been begging for it, we finally maybe got the last bit of it, but it's in $1984, right? And this is probably my number one concern, that there's a whole lot of fluff and great stuff for us, but this bill could get passed, we could get extension in our recreation areas, our wilderness areas with no resources. And so that is one thing that I had some further conversations after I talked to Congressman Blumenauer's staff that I did not relay to them. But I'm wondering if we shouldn't put that concern maybe here or maybe when it's a bill. But that is really, I think we're really at risk to have something like that happen to us again. Commissioner Kramer?
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up, Chair. That was my first comment to both staffers at those offices. This is an unfunded mandate in your concept at this point. And that's, there again, is very irresponsible, trying to put together something like this without funding our agency that has to do this work. So anyway, I was told by Ms. Brumfield that when they receive our letter, that they would love to have a conversation with us and do a little bit more one-on-one. And that is, that was my other point to both of those staffers was that there was solicited support conversations going on, but nobody offered up to have a conversation with us that thought that it might not work. So we got a lot of work to do and I'm not opposed to looking at some of these pieces and carving them out and taking a look to see, but we got a long way to go. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that, Steve. I think even if the funding, because a lot of times what happens is they'll bring forward something and then they'll fund it with, you know, some appropriations. But over time, those were just like, you know, curricular schools, you know, kind of like, well, it's hard to fund it. You know, it starts declining and pretty soon you got nothing. And then you're still got the responsibility to deal with whatever it is, but no, no resource. So it's a good point. It's a very good point.
Yeah, I think this really warrants us tracking very carefully as this progresses, making sure that our voices are heard. I also think that, you know, I wish that they would spend the energy, you know, on such a legislative concept and then a bill to really prioritize what is our number one priority in the forest, which is wildfire. And the planning and the mitigation and the forest management that we need. But this is just such a huge, huge thing. And it's, I don't know if it'll actually end up being beneficial to us or not. Let's see, do I have anything else here? Well, it was brought up to me, Steve, and maybe you can help. Is there some issues with our Womic irrigation area with actually designating part of the Boulder Creek as a wilderness area? Do you know anything about that?
Not at this time. That would be potentially an enhancement. But what we're looking at is the Badger irrigation. Because of the history there, that was grandfathered in when the wilderness went in. But because of that, now that all of the irrigation districts are piping their ditches, now we've got to look at how are we going to be able to do this with inside the wilderness, potentially with horses and man labor to get those pieces of pipe in the ground to utilize and save all of that water. So we've got some big challenges ahead of us on that piece of it. But on the Boulder side, I've had some conversations with some of our constituents down south feel that that is a potential, because it's not, it's not basically an east side forest. It's a moist side and it has different qualities than what we're looking at on over here. So there's potential with that Boulder piece. So we'll just keep playing and talking about it.
Okay, it's just something to keep our eye on for sure as we move forward.
Absolutely.
Okay. Would either of you like to add any more language to this concept based on what we've talked about? Or are we good with what we've already decided to change? What do you think?
Yeah, I'm good with this because what this will do now will get us on the record and we'll be able to continue those conversations.
I'm fine with that as well.
Okay. I think I will open it up to some public comments since this is, you know, quite a broad concept and there might be some folks that have some interest in this. So if anyone would like to comment at this time on what we've discussed, please raise your hand or jump in or questions? Okay, thank you. So I think you just need consensus. Is that correct, Kathy?
That's correct.
Okay.
It would be good probably for Kelly to have someone be specific about the two changes. The, I think there was one in the third paragraph and then the last sentence.
So Scott can go with the third and then I'll go with the last.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, well then, I just, so Kelly, just to flip it around that we put force management before fire suppression, okay?
And I actually didn't have any changes. I was just commenting that I like that in the third paragraph.
Yeah, me too. Okay, so it looks like we have consensus on the letter with that one change. And Kelly's got the change, right?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Kelly, for putting that together for us. That's a lot of work. Really, really appreciate that. So thank you. So nice to have that expertise on our staff that can pull something off like that for us. So thank you. All right. All right. It looks like, I think I've covered everything except commission call, right, Kathy?
You have. Congratulations.
We're not quite on time, but that's all right. Get used to that. All right. For now, I'd like to open it up to Commissioners for commission call. Either of you like to jump in here?
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, I'll just, I'm going to just jump all over the place, Chair. We talked a little bit about last meeting. We talked a little bit about last meeting where we were unable to join in the childcare conversation. Have either of you reached out to Mr. Spots to get involved with that? Or where, where should we go with that?
I have not.
Yeah, you know, Nicole Beekler is going to be our representative from the county. But I don't believe any of the three of us have jumped onto that committee. So I'm, I don't know if, if they would want that level of participation. Are you, are you thinking one of us should, Steve, or?
No, we brought it up and, and I, I saw that Nicole was, was there, was voluntold. And, and so, but what, as I move forward in my new position at AOC, childcare has been elevated at County Solutions. And so I just need that conduit so that I can bring the conversation from our level up to state and state back down to our level. So, so I'm glad that, that we're okay with that. And so with that, had a conversation with Lisa Farquharson at the Chamber. We're doing a monthly one-on-one now. Lisa would like to be able to be a liaison to help us with any projects that we have. She was instrumental early on in the COVID piece to get information out and help us with that. And so moving forward with open lines of communication there. We're about to finish up our forest land reclassification. We've held our public hearings and now we have one more to go to finalize those. Commissioner Hagy was our representative the last time we did this. It's been quite an interesting process. So once all done and, and over with here shortly, and then there is a request from KRIA for me to come speak to update them on our renewable projects, working with Dr. Housley Glover and, and the planning staff to get a memo to, to update those guys to see where we're going with that. And I guess that's about it for right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Thanks for doing all of that. Commissioner Hagy?
Yeah, I don't have anything too particular today. I guess the only thing I was gonna throw out and a little brief discussion that Kathy and I had was related to when Tyler's on vacation, you know, kind of who's in charge. So when we have weather events and things like that. So I think we'll, Kathy's gonna be working on that. But I think it's a, it's a good question about kind of how, what's the kind of roles of everybody when certain people are gone. So I think it's Kathy had mentioned, I think it's an important thing that we make sure that we kind of get resolved. So it's just clear.
Yeah, good point. I think when Tyler gets back, I wanna, we'll sit down and have that conversation. Just maybe a little more organizational clarity and to allow him to actually be on vacation.
Exactly.
And I think that's the ultimate goal. So he can get the rest that he deserves, for sure.
And I've, and I've also asked Kathy Clark to list that as our next topic for work session. So it definitely is a priority and we need to, we need to have that set up for whoever has to make those decisions in the future. So.
Exactly.
So.
Great, great, great suggestion, Steve. Yeah, thank you. I do have a few things, of course. First thing on my list, I just want to make a, a really, I, I just want to shout out appreciation to our road department and our law enforcement and facilities crew, all these folks that have had to work during this snowstorm that continues. It's gonna be a big mess, even though it's, I don't think it's snowing right now. But they've been working through the holidays and I just want to be sure that we, you know, appreciate them and recognize it. While some of us are able to enjoy the time with our families, they're out working to keep us safe. Also want to recognize, you know, Sheridan, Matthew and Tyler for jumping in on this health district concern that we had around this emergency tent setup. They jumped in, they, they've gotten some information. Certainly Sheridan jumped in right away and got the tent rolling. And of course, Tyler came in off vacation to get involved in that. So I want to recognize them. And oh, just a last minute, I did get a text from Kenny. Now, I can't answer any of your questions, but I am gonna tell you that we were selected in the legislation for the AOC LOC Coordinated Homeless Pilot that we talked about, about a month ago, which if we accept it, my recollection is that there's millions of dollars that we might be able to take advantage of. But still more questions than answers. And I will have him come to the next meeting if we have the time to explain it to us and make sure that we're still on board to accept that. So that could potentially be some really good news for our community. So I wanted to just bring that out. And then one final question, sorry. There was a note from Leah Horner that referenced a regional infrastructure fund. And I did not know what that was. And is that something that we should be paying attention to? Can you guys enlighten me on what that is? Cause I don't know.
Steve has his hand up. Maybe he, I, I can tell you my perspective.
Okay.
Yeah, my hand was on, on the, the MacAC.
Okay.
Okay.
So go ahead.
Well, I think what Leah's talking about, it was $40 million. And so these were the funds that, they've been typically called regional strategies kind of, but it's kind of, has a different name. But there's, was no funding. So I think they're trying to find some funding for, you know, all of these regional boards to have some resources to do something with. So that's what that's about.
And are you on the, the regional board or Steve? I can't remember.
I am on that, yeah.
You are on that. Okay, so if there's anything, you'll bring it.
Sure.
Okay, super. Okay, Steve, did you have a comment about the MacAC?
Yeah, I got two now that Scott brought that up. That is one of the agenda items for County Solutions on Monday, the 10th. So we will be talking with Regional Solutions and how we can intermix and how we can all work together on that. So more to follow there. And then when you said, Commissioner Schwartz, when you said, "We can accept the funds," who are we?
Um, that's a question I can't quite answer right now. My recollection is that, and again, let's have Candy come next, next time and really explain this to us now that we have been accepted to possibly participate in this pilot, okay?
So my understanding is that, that McClellan B. Community Action was, was the applicant. And if so, if they received, then I'm curious as to what the county's participation level would be. So anyway, lots of questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kathy Clark, could you reach out to Kenny and see if he can't join us if we have capacity at our next meeting?
I will.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else?
The only other comment I was gonna make was, I thought it was interesting that we, with the, with the tent, well, we were the first ones, you know, he, somebody asked the question. It's like, no, we haven't done that before. You know, whether it was in the right location or the wrong location and all of these things, you live and learn, right? But the fact that there was a need and the state really, you know, we put the word out and the state came through. And it may not have been perfect, but something was done to try to address the, the situation, to try to help those folks. So that's really encouraging to me that that happened. And, you know, like I said, we live and we learn and we're gonna do a better job next time. But to everyone that was involved, I, I think it's pretty exciting.
I agree 100%. Okay, anything else? Okay, do I, I'll just go ahead and adjourn the meeting?
Yes. Nice job.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for your help.